We left off. Well, we were on the public safety. I believe is where we left off.
May I make a comment about the public safety?
I was talking to the commissioners about stuff that we left off there.
Forty-three, page forty-three is where we left off.
Yes, just a minute.
May I make a comment about the public safety tax?
Yes, go ahead.
Sharon wasn't here, I was going through the budget, and halfway through Mike interrupted me and said we need to go do the public safety tax. I didn't quite understand where it's coming from, until I talked to Jane, she told me, "Bob, all the taxes, raises and everything, we can take off." The public safety tax saves us money in the budget. I said, "Well, that makes sense." I agree with Mike, we should have done it first, instead of halfway through the budget. We've only approved one thing so far, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to three fire departments that aren't even in the budget. They'd have been happy at twenty-five thousand dollars each, thrilled with twenty-five thousand. We gave them a hundred and fifty, which cuts back everything else that we need to do here. That seventy-five thousand, we could have saved, we would have put a new boiler in this courthouse. Now, I got laughed at for saying that. I'm speaking from experience. Because I was in Rushville in nineteen eighties, and I had a house with a boiler in it, and they lost their gas. And all of a sudden, pipes started bursting everywhere. If that happens in this courthouse, we'll be bursting all over pipes, we'll be busting all our plumbing, and this courthouse will be closed, while we do a major remodeling in this courthouse, because we didn't put a boiler in it. That is an emergency situation. We've got one boiler on its last legs, that's gonna try to keep this courthouse going next winter, and we need a new boiler in this courthouse. Laugh at me all you want, till it happens, and I'm gonna say, "Well, I told you so."
Well, I don't know who laughed at you, I didn't.
Always making jokes about it.
Well, my thing is, I, I mean, I disagree, because I do feel like the volunteer fire departments deserve that, they need that, and that is a priority.
Are we gonna give them fifty thousand dollars every year?
We'll revisit it next year.
They didn't ask, it'll be revisited last year, 'cause we'll have the public safety tax next year also.
Well, I think ten, fifteen thousand, if we give them fifty thousand this year, they've got plenty to work with.
Were you here when they presented their OSHA standards that needed to be?
I certainly did. And we've even got a TV station needing money, we're gonna help address that too.
That's gonna be addressed, it sure is.
Well, then what are we gonna do about the raises?
Do you know how much we have sitting in County General, Bob?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then.
And there was a time when you sat here, and Mike sat here, and I sat over there, and meeting the budget was the number-one priority, because you called me and thanked me for sticking to the budget. But nobody cares about the budget anymore.
That's your opinion.
That's not true, yeah.
That's not true.
I have no idea how they care about the budget.
Well, it's twelve million dollars, and we've got nine, so what do we do about it?
That's why we're here.
We ain't gonna get there, that's what I'm trying to tell you. We're using the public safety tax to feed fire departments that aren't even in the budget.
Where do you expect our emergency services to come from, if we're not able to be?
You ain't gonna get it, because we ain't got the money. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
So are you just saying then, they just need to get away with it?
We need to be reducing this with the public safety tax, not just pouring out money. Two things were said the other night, that hit me hard.
You know what you're talking about? Do you have any clue what you're talking about? Public safety tax for public safety.
That's right.
That's for these guys.
And what I'm saying was, you gave fifty thousand dollars to each one, and twenty-five would have been thrilled then. Twenty-five would have been plenty.
Twenty-five would have been.
Really? Bob, do you know the cost of anything?
Huh?
Good on you, just doing what you want to do.
I know the cost, I've been getting benched for those boilers for you for the last week. I know the cost. Don't tell me about cost, Mike, I know cost. You are a lot different person sitting in this seat than you are sitting over there.
No, the same person that was sitting there is sitting here, the same person.
No, because you called me and thanked me for sticking to the budget. Today, we just spend money like this.
How do you think it's sticking to the budget?
We can't do it.
That money is not coming out of general fund, that is not coming out of general fund.
But what we use that for, we reserve the general fund.
Let's ask our firemen.
It's not going to go into general fund at all.
Let's ask our fireman who's right here, if he wanna speak about what you guys needed.
Well, we've already heard it.
Well, I'm just saying, Bob.
That's right, and we're, I think we've got enough support.
We already made a discussion, I remember having a discussion, why would we be hashing it?
I think we've got enough support for the fifty thousand dollars to the public.
I didn't understand all we're coming from, until Jane explained it to me, Mike, and I said, "Mike is right, we need to go through the public safety tax." You showed me in this budget, those three fire departments are in there anyway. They're not in there.
They haven't been, and how many, how have they ever been in there? I don't have a question, that's about how many they want.
The question was, will the public safety tax help reduce the budget? Yes, it will, if we use it for that.
No, no. If you take something out, if you take something that's called a general fund, that would, we could use public safety tax for, in lieu of that, yes.
Zack told us the other day, he said, "You give me five thousand, I'll be happy. You give me seventy-five, I'll be thrilled. If you give me ten thousand, you're nuts." Do you remember that?
No.
He did, he stood right there and told us, I said, "Well, find some common sense that's coming in here." Is Kelly in here?
Kelly?
Okay.
Hello?
You have said on numerous occasions, that you're losing people to Rush County, right? They go over there and get hard-on right now.
Yeah.
They're paying their people fifty-four thousand dollars a year, why are they leaving for? They're not gonna hire people to fill the posts that's not open.
Well, some of it, some of the leaving that I know of, was like maternity, and they decided not to come back.
Why? Fifty-four thousand dollars a year?
Rush County pays forty-two.
Forty-two. That I can't answer, I just knew that there was one, that a while back, they left because they had a baby, they didn't wanna come back.
So we've got one, how many have we launched to Rush County now?
Three.
Three, over the last, what, two years?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I've lost part-timers, just because they can't do the job. They can't do the job, you know, but I've lost, I've had this in turnover, a lot of turnover there, last five years.
Kelly, you've got a budget of over four hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yep. Now, that's with the raises. If I didn't have the raises in there, it wouldn't be that much.
How much would it be?
I pay two hundred and four thousand in wages, let's see, what would that be, take off?
A hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. For the raises.
So you take that off of that. But I don't use your County General. I'm a standalone, I stand alone with city funds and state, I have one funds.
But yet, you're wanting money from this public safety tax.
Because we are public safety.
She's covered by it now.
The criteria fits my department, so yes.
And it fits the sheriff's department?
Yes.
And it fits the courthouse, too.
No, we're different.
No, no.
Courthouse is not public safety.
Nope.
Code of Volunteers, code of Fire?
Public safety is everything related to first responders. Your fire department, EMS.
Fire, Volunteer, Fire, EMS, nine-one-one.
And Sheriff's Department, and the Police Department on the city side.
And they're wanting raises, and we can fund it through the public safety tax.
Yes, without touching, without touching, if you can help it, your County General.
Correct, but last time we were here, we went through it, adding yours and Zack's in there, along with the fire departments, and we were over, what the money were coming in from county safety.
That was just recommendations, we have not approved anything.
You have approved, the three fire departments, has already been voted on and passed.
It's not final.
I was gonna say, your budget's not final, although they adopted on the sixteenth.
I thought this was like the final three thing.
But we have approved the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the three fire departments.
That could be changed.
That was just the recommendation.
Which I told them, like, we didn't have it here.
I mean, none of the budgets are set in stone yet.
Right, we took a vote, but it, for the recommendation, and that's what they were asking for, but it's not.
And we've not took any votes on anything else.
Because of the public safety tax, nothing else has been voted on, we haven't discussed at all.
But the fire department's a public safety tax, too.
Yep. But what we're gonna do now, what might, like, for tonight, maybe revisit the public safety tax, go over it with all of us here, and it could be maybe some reconsideration on what we're doing.
Where you gonna start at, Sharon? What is next after the volunteer fire departments?
We were on page forty-three.
Yeah, forty-three.
Twelve million dollar figure is figuring, all departments, right, correct, Jane?
I'm sorry?
That twelve million figure in all the departments? That Bob, the twelve million dollar figure that Bob told him up there?
Yeah.
That's all the departments that's, that's County General, right?
That's all the County General. It's eleven-something. Like, what was originally requested, and what you guys got, what you guys have it cut down to is ten-eight, does not count any raises. So obviously, you're gonna have to come back to County General, but if you, I would think you wanna finish, go through everything else first.
Yeah, that's what I thought. It's hard to do the public safety tax until we know everything that we're doing anyway. That's the reason I said, but that's what I was saying when we, let's just move on.
Absolutely.
Page?
Forty-three.
Forty-three, okay.
Tim will start counting every time you say forty-three.
Keep me up today.
Yeah, I guess that's about the fourth or fifth time, everybody, you're on the same page.
Yes, we're on there, we're there.
Okay, so, curl fees, don't get much there?
No, there's not.
Just wanna leave it?
There, there's only one increase, and that's the telephone, to twelve-hundred, from what it was. Right?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, the Health Department, page forty-fourth.
Now, there are some things in this budget, that I know he has asked for, he has two different budgets, and he's asked for the same thing of both of them. So you can approve it if you need it one place or the other, but you don't have to approve it in both places.
What page? Are you talking about these two pages, or are you talking about County General?
I'm talking about the Health Department, has the Fund eleven fifty-nine, and then on page fifty-one, he has the local public health services, which is that Governor's Health Initiative.
What else does he have duplicated in?
Page forty-four and page fifty-one. Are we looking for the duplication?
Yeah. You just take, can change?
Well, like, on the, okay, on page forty-four, the line that says clerk, it's thirty-five two fifty, he's also, on page fifty-one, it's listed as office manager, but that thirty-five two fifty, that's the same person.
I'm just saying, can you go ahead and take out the duplication symbols?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking what they were. I know that one.
I mean, that would make more sense, right?
I know that one as a duplication.
Yeah.
And I wanna say the sanitarium, one of the sanitariums.
Are you taking off the ten-one thirteen?
Six seventy-three. Let's see, on that, yeah, no, no, the clerk. Ten-one thirty-six, 'cause it's duplicated on page fifty-one. Geez, which one you taking it out of? I mean, I know it's gonna be.
I took it out of the eleven fifty-nine.
Okay.
Honestly, that one might.
The sanitarium, the seventy-one.
Jane, did he ask for a helper, for same thing as him, I mean, below him?
Yes, he did ask for a full-time, which I, I believe that his current, the sanitarium, his current part-time person has applied for the full-time position.
Did he say with all he had coming in, he had money for it?
Yes. Yeah, that Governor's Health Initiative, at the state level, they've already approved that budget, and how much money he should receive.
So we can go ahead and give him the, it's all the work they got going on in there now?
Yeah, and it could be that clerk is the only one, 'cause on some of the nurses, I mean, I know he's got nurses in both positions, but I think he's wanting to add services.
Yes, he is, more of a, more of a time setting.
Yeah, so I think maybe the office manager was the only one that needed to be in one or the other.
So, and that's the clerk, right?
Yes, yeah, and this one, it's just called the clerk, and the other one, it was the office manager.
Where was that under? Where, which one was that, that he was wanting, somebody to bring in? Was it in you?
Which one? Okay, I know, he's asked for an environmentalist in the new budget, on page fifty-one, that's one oh two oh eight. 'Cause in the, in the current budget, okay, there's a sanitarium, which I, is Matt, I believe, and then a sanitarium number two, which is Bruce Price, right now, that's a part-time position.
What, what's part-time?
The sanitarium number two.
I think he wouldn't make it full-time, did he?
Yeah, and, and I I don't see a sanitarium in that other budget, but there's an environmentalist in that other budget.
The environmentalist.
A forty-one five.
Okay. All three of these accounts, the eleven fifty-nine, eleven seventy-six, and eleven sixty-one, are all coming from the grant, is that correct, Jane?
I'm, I'm sorry, the eleven sixty-one is that Governor's Health Initiative, eleven fifty-nine is property taxes. That's a levy fund.
Okay.
And, and fees, like, what they bring in.
Why the jump in ten-one sixteen for a supervisor stipend five thousand dollars, when he had twenty-six hundred total?
Page forty-four was the property tax, you said?
Yes, it was funded to the property.
And eleven seventy-six, which one was that one, Jane? Eleven seventy-six?
Eleven seventy-six is part of the highway.
Which one are you talking about?
Sorry, Bob.
Ten-one sixteen, supervisor stipend five thousand dollars, he's only spent twenty-seven hundred.
Well, this year's not over yet.
This is?
That twenty-six ninety-two.
Well, there was nothing adopted last year for the budget for it.
That was new.
No, but he came back for an additional appropriation afterwards, because in the salary ordinance, Matt has been doing that job, and had not ever received any extra pay for it, so he presented a one forty-four, and you guys approved it to pay him a, that five thousand dollars extra to service the office, for the administrator.
And he's one of those people that falls under the paid overtime and exempt situation, right?
Yeah.
He pays for his own group health insurance?
That, that fund does, yes. Which, that is, that's something else he's budgeted out of both accounts.
We did what?
He, he's requested that out of both accounts, too. Yep, that might be something, honestly, we thought I'd have a talk with Matt.
Yeah, 'cause one's sixty-nine thousand, and the other one's ninety, ninety-two.
Yep. And I don't know if that's a, if that's a duplication, or if he needs that much because of hiring, hoping to hire new staff. And like, in eleven sixty-one, if he's asking ten thousand for the direct term, well, if you're gonna go to, there, you would need to get the supervisor stipend in eleven fifty-nine.
What a big jump, sixty-nine thousand to ninety-two thousand. Which one did we wipe out?
I, I really wouldn't get comfortable doing anything without Matt.
Yeah.
Well, he adopted eighty-four last year. So for sure, we don't need to have the sixty-nine, 'cause we already got the ninety.
And I, I truly, I don't remember if that's because he's wanting to hire extra staff.
Under group health?
Or if it's duplicates.
Excuse me.
Well, we need to eliminate one of them, 'cause they're both under the same title. Sixty-nine thousand or ninety-two thousand?
Bob, without talking to Matt, I don't know for sure that that's a duplication, though. It could be that he's wanting to hire new staff with that extra money. So I'm saying, I don't think y'all ought to do anything without, without confirming it with him.
Staff have to do their insurance, other than the fact he wants a one forty-four on it, to be able to move it around.
You wanna call and see if he wants to come over?
I, I don't have his information.
I mean, that's a big jump, twenty-some thousand dollars, under the same.
I mean, that could be, I mean, that could be one employee, though, if they take the family insurance.
And he's asking for one.
Yeah, so I, I don't.
So that could very well be.
Like I said, I do know there's some duplications, 'cause he told us that when he was here, but I don't remember what all of his, his duplications, and I, I wouldn't be comfortable to cut any of it, without without asking.
Want me to get his phone number?
I got it.
I talked to him earlier today, but.
I, I never thought about it being a question.
He explained it very well when he was here, so I don't know.
I just texted you.
Sharon, you wanna wait and see whether he, if he can come?
I would.
Yeah.
I just texted him, see if he's around, so if he can come.
That's my main, just, we can move on.
Yeah.
Come back to this, and maybe he can come.
I think environmentalist was what he wanted to bring that guy up to full-time, Jane.
Yep.
To do what?
I just texted a guy, he said, "The new position would be that," and sanitationist is environmentalist.
So the sanitarium and environmentalist would be the same person?
That's why, guy just texted me.
That's because he's nephew, seventeen-eight.
Matt get back with you, yeah?
Forty-one five.
Best thing to do is bring him in, clear it up.
Is he wanting to remodel his office? He's asking five thousand dollars for equipment, office equipment. And forty-five thousand for a nurse. He's only booked fifteen, and that, last year, so far. A nurse, an immunization nurse, pulls up forty-five thousand dollars.
Yes, the highway, okay, yes.
Yes, totally.
So forty-five?
Did you get a hoe to him?
Yeah, we're texting right now.
Okay. Okay, Highway Administration.
Y'all can tell me what you want these numbers to be, right now, I'm just typing in what they asked for, except I took the raises out.
He's not close by, you want him to call in? He's not close, he's gonna call in.
That would work, if he calls in.
I wouldn't think he could do this without looking at those numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, he would probably need to be here.
Maybe tell him the next night, we schedule, like?
Yeah. Okay.
Plan, yeah, plan.
And then we'll go back to him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike, stop, you make me crazy when I can't hear you.
So we can go to his restaurant.
Okay, give me some wings while you're there.
Maybe it'll lunch you or some things.
It hurts the strength. Does anybody wanna do here?
I'm just.
Are we on page forty-five, no, forty-six now?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, yeah. Okay, now, here is where Jay would be on those increases in salaries, too. Could be, yeah. Or.
I mean, there's nobody that you have to take out, the thing will be on some, if you don't, the subject of overtime.
Right, it could be overtime. Yeah, it's overtime.
I don't know how much that would affect him.
Why would sick pay go up ten thousand, off to ten thousand?
I've got a note here, Jim, says something about contractual or something, rather, I don't know what that was.
He said he has four guys that are gonna retire, and when he does, you have to pay out any sick days. According to their union contract.
Okay.
That's what I have on, yeah. Pay out a current amount to four people retiring. He really hasn't went up that much on anything. Thousand dollars in utilities, three hundred, five hundred.
Two thousand on wages.
Same as it was in, on the supervisor stipend, it's same as it was in twenty-three, twenty-four. Comments from anyone?
Big jump in technology communications, five thousand to two thousand.
On page forty-six?
Yeah. Three oh one four one. Both the repairs, I have a question mark, twenty thousand, what you spent is seven thousand, seventeen thousand expended in twenty-one. Is he expecting to have some problems with his equipment? And trash hauling has jumped to four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that was a contract he had with someone, I remember him talking about that, the trash hauling. So that's the reason of that increase. It's a new company.
Last year's budget, one seventy, for truck and motor vehicles, and so far he's spent much less than that, hasn't he?
I can't remember his reasoning on that, was it? 'Cause we added, it's three hundred thousand. But there was a comment that he made about that, does anyone remember what that was? Mike, do you?
I'm sorry?
What's the county you're talking about?
The four oh four two oh and four oh four three oh, it's three hundred thousand total, but I can't, it was, it's for purchase equipment in truck and motor vehicles.
They wanna replace two trucks this year, Phil?
Yeah, we need to replace some trucks.
Is that what that was for? I can't remember, I'm just trying to.
Yeah, my notes say that he did not have anything particular in mind, that is more for replacing any equipment as needed.
Yeah.
I'd like to be aware, did the deal we got, wasn't such a deal, from Noblesville, those used trucks?
Well, God, well, the group that we did purchase from Noblesville, had a lot of problems with it. That I think has eventually been solved, but the anti-collusion equipment on those engines, it was really the big problem. So we're, we're constantly in need of. We're constantly in need of upgrading.
Have you guys looked into leasing these things instead?
We've had one lease agreement proposal presented to us. We haven't done anything with it. I don't think that. Well, it's all about money, Kate. The problem with the highway department is our funding is not increasing.
They cut you thirty thousand last year, didn't they? Instead of one to, or more than that, three hundred thousand, didn't they, Dale?
Well, Jim, quite some time ago, we did get a cut.
I thought it went to six sixty-nine and from nine something last year. It was a big cut.
It was, I believe, the year before, in local roads and streets, not in motor vehicle highway.
I saw where the state makes some big cuts on their funding.
Well, last year, he requested a hundred and twenty-one thousand something in trucks and heavy equipment, sixty-eight thousand. He didn't use those two amounts last year. Where are you at? Which one? I'm on page forty-six, looking at heavy equipment and truck and motor vehicles and purchase equipment, the four oh four two oh and four oh four three oh, I believe.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at, three hundred thousand total.
I don't know. When I look through this, there's a lot of things in here that they're looking at possible contingencies, so we want this extra funding. And what we should be looking at is if the contingencies happen, come back here, we'll look at it for extra funding at the time. We need to look at what's going on instead of what may happen.
I'm just saying what they did not, they asked for last year but did not spend, that's all I'm saying.
Well, that's what I'm talking about, Kate. They're asking for the moon, and they didn't need it.
Right.
And that's where our budget goes over two million dollars because, though, this could happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, it could happen, but until it does, let's meet budget.
Yeah, yeah, there was two, almost two point two million that was asked for last year and did not get spent, so I think there's a lot of padding going on here in the budgets.
You think?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah, it's full of, yeah.
So in that area, what are you thinking? So thus far, they've used twenty-eight thousand.
I know this is the one that, like I told you guys, when we're looking at the one screen, keep in mind that you're only seeing part of the picture because you're not looking at eleven seventy-three, it's a sub fund. So like for the motor, truck and motor vehicle the year before, it appears on this screen, they only spent eighty-one thousand. But if you look at, well, I've got you pulled up now, they spent eighty-one out of eleven seventy-six and eighty-one out of eleven seventy-three. So they actually spent a hundred and sixty-two.
Okay, a hundred and sixty-two thousand.
But you can't see that on the budget side because this only shows me the parent fund, not the sub fund.
So they actually have spent.
Okay. They spent it because they give to them.
Pardon me?
They spent it because they give it to them, you know what I'm saying?
No.
What you're saying, I think, is if you give them the money right now, they don't have any use for it, they will find a use for it later on.
That's called government.
Yeah, that's typical government and the budget.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the eighty-one.
We need to deal with realities instead of wishes.
Jane, how much is given back last year from the highway department at the end of the year?
Unexpended between the eleven seventy-six and eleven seventy-three was four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
If they gave back?
They didn't spend, yeah.
How much was it? I'm sorry.
Four hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Do you know what it was? Get that up? Material for roads or something?
It's probably several things, wasn't it, Jane?
Yeah. I mean, some of it was. See, I can't without a.
Well, on the one, I mean.
Hundred and forty-one minus ninety. I mean, some of this I'd have to be sitting here doing math, and I can't do it that fast. So, just overall, I mean, some of it was in the equipment, though it looks like there was an unexpended balance, two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Because he carried forward some money and then had additional appropriation. And that was unspent, so I don't know if that's, couldn't find a vehicle. Because I know right now, a lot of times in the commissioners' meetings, you have to be like, well, I'm looking at such and such a used vehicle at some, you know, Chevyville or somewhere. Well, if he can't buy it quick enough, or somebody else gets it, I mean, it's not that the need's not there, it's the ability to find what they need within our means is sometimes not there.
Like Jim said, if you give it to them, they're going to spend.
So if it gets taken out of there, and then they would just have to come in and request that they did find a, maybe.
They can come in and do an additional preparation request, or it could just be an additional.
That's what I'm talking about, give them what they need, not what they want. Technology and communication, three oh one four one, five thousand dollars. New radios or what? We're spending more than twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred.
Do you know what that is, Dale? The technology and communications, it's three oh one one four one, three oh one four one. It's five thousand. Is that for radios or what is that for? Computers?
I did discuss that with Jay, and I really don't know what he had in mind there, but it makes sense that it would be for radios and such.
Ask for twenty-two hundred dollars more than he ever spent.
I don't know why he used that figure.
I'd say three thousand dollars would be plenty, because there's another need that we need to go about. Most expensive.
So you guys are the same page, three oh one four one, cutting the technology and communications to three thousand instead of five?
That's great.
I would say two.
You would say what?
I would say two.
The most he's ever spent, Kate, was twenty-seven, so and then twenty-one, expended twenty-one fifty-five in two thousand twenty-two. I'm okay with two K, and he can come back if he needs another thousand.
Cut her back to, again.
Let's do something.
So we're doing two thousand instead of three?
Yeah.
Yes.
I know the other night, somebody said if we're giving the fire department's money out of public safety, we can take that fifteen out of here.
Oh, yeah, the contractual fire department, per each volunteer fire department. So take the fifteen thousand out, since we're giving them the public safety?
Yeah.
Okay, I had that note, too.
I think our other services could be cut, too. I know it's only a thousand dollars, he's never used that much.
What is it, Jim?
Other services, three oh three oh, three oh three oh three. It's on another ten.
I'll cut it off.
Yeah, no more here, he's taking out, that's fine. I just cut it.
So we're not cutting enough?
Slash and burn, baby.
Okay, so the next big one would be since they did not use the three hundred thousand.
Which count number are you on?
I'm on four oh four two zero and four oh four three zero.
Okay.
Because that's where we had talked about, you could leave some in there, and if they need more, they would come back and ask for it.
Yeah, or they can check into lease options.
Yeah, with Dale.
Because I think leasing is cheaper.
So what do we want to put in there?
Well, that's what I'm.
One twenty-three, one thirty? Didn't spend any last year.
Pardon me?
Okay.
You were four, they spent a hundred and twenty-three thousand on twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Three ninety-four in two thousand and one, twenty-one.
Well, I think this is what we talked about. Dale, they want some trucks that they want to upgrade, replace, so I would just leave it at a hundred and thirty.
One thirty?
On the purchase of equipment?
Yeah. I may get you a dump bed.
What about the four oh four three zero truck and motor vehicles? That's a hundred and seventy.
I'll take that down to one forty.
Given that, once the truck did it, Dale?
A good used truck, what's your point thinking?
A used truck?
Or are you thinking new, just to avoid the hassle?
We would much rather have new trucks.
So what's the ballpark figure for a truck, what do they need, what do they want?
All around about two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Shoot, let's get four. Barbie, yeah. Well, that would, I mean, that would, that would give us some clicks, but if they wanted to do, I don't. That was last year, was the special. Okay, did we replace any trucks last year?
No.
No, they didn't. That's what we're saying, the money has just been sitting there.
I would just say.
Nothing has been replaced.
Crap or get up a pot.
Well, yeah, that's what we're saying.
Yeah, give them an, let's, tell Jay.
If you find something, then they come back and do, you know, they come across it and then come back.
Well, I have always resisted borrowing money to buy equipment down there. It's cheaper to pay cash.
Well, we all know that.
And that's why sometimes this money doesn't get spent, is because we don't have enough to get what we need. So we wait, and we let it in the kingdom. You know, I would just ask that we don't punish that, you know? I don't want to spend any more money than necessary.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, we don't spend it, it just stays.
You get the one thirty, it gives you three hundred thousand.
But the difference, Dale, is this, when it comes to a need instead of a wish, you're out getting the best price you can, not just pulling something out of the sky and say, oh, we want to budget two hundred thousand. No, we need a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, and you come here, and we try to see where we can fit it in. And that's a good thing about trying to meet just what needs to be done, and then actually getting prices together to see what we have to have. See the difference? I mean, we meet budget and then fit the needs as we need to.
You take some away, your mattress, you got more.
I appreciate you do sharpen your pencil, Dale. You're doing the best you can. I know you are.
Well, it's not just me, it's, Jay is really good about not standing unnecessarily. He's, and he's constantly in contact with these equipment dealers and and looking for stuff that we need to have good prices, you know, so he's very mindful of our money problems.
I wasn't trying to say he wasn't, but you're in charge of him, so you kind of know what you're getting, okay?
But at least with the highway department, whatever we do there, everybody gets to see it, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so we're leaving out the same or we're taking it out?
We're leaving out the same, so if you're going to get vehicles, just sit here and do it.
I don't see a lot of difference between truck and motor vehicles and purchase equipment, so we're looking at basically a three hundred thousand dollar budget to do what they had to do.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. Dale said if we go truck, it'd be about two twenty-five, so that's four fifty, but four thousand five hundred.
How bad do you need a new truck? I mean, the phone part?
Well, we've got two down there, we had to take out of service before we announced. We've got a distributor truck that obviously no longer can fix. This year, we've got an outside contractor coming in and spraying oil for us for chicks. First time we've ever had to do that. To replace that truck alone is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. If you buy new.
What's wrong with it?
He said it can't be fixed.
I disagree.
It's a long list, things.
I'd hardly believe it can't be fixed.
Well, it can be fixed. I've taken the same position for the last two, three years.
Anything can be fixed, it's whether it's feasible to fix it or not.
It's a cost, it's good, it makes sense.
I need to look at it.
Well, you, okay, we'll let you fix it if you think you can fix it.
Honestly, I can't do that, but yes, I probably could. I mean, is it rusted frame? Is it bad engine? Is?
Move by all the tape and wire you need.
Rested frame, yeah, I've replaced many rusted frames. Bad engine? Yep, pull the bad engines and replace the engines. Transmission, rear ends.
Don't forget the steering box, too, you can't hold it on the road.
Well, that's a pretty easy fix.
And another thing, the computer system that reads from a satellite that determines how much oil goes on the road.
That I'm not capable of.
Well, that's what we really need, right?
But there are people that are.
So that's the stuff that's wrong with this truck you're talking about?
Well, that's just the distributor truck alone, you know?
So what we need to do, get a estimate of what it costs, and then.
Mike?
Touch the budget?
This you and I go look at.
You and Jim go down and fix it.
You can be an opinion.
I'm going to get an opinion, you don't have to say like that.
Let's go down, let's go look at it.
He's glad to go over the whole thing with it.
I'll go look at it.
Watch.
The two trucks, the two trucks that are out of service, what are they, the dump truck?
No, one, we've got one service truck, we had to take out of service post the frame that actually rusted, too. And the distributor truck is currently unserviceable post hitting the support anymore. So I'll be looking forward to your guys' report.
I'll go look at it.
I don't take them either, Dave.
Do they do preventive maintenance down there on the trucks?
Sure they do.
Yes, yes, they do.
Hold the distributor. Is the distributor truck?
I think it's thirty-eighties, eighty-three or eighty-four, I would call it.
How many miles do you get driven a year?
Not really how many miles per year, because it's especially a piece of wood.
Sure, that's what I had, that's what I thought.
Dale, how are we sitting on salt for this winter?
We've got plenty because I'm not ordering any snow or anything this winter, Bob.
Supposed to be a rough winter.
I hope not.
I've heard it before.
I've heard that, too.
Is that in this budget anywhere for that?
More smoke?
Salt.
I see for sand, I don't see it for salt.
That's in the mirror's budget for downtown for the skating rink.
Just make sure you close them roads in time this time.
Yeah. We haven't, we haven't gotten any prices from Morton yet this year on what salt's gonna be this fall. We'll be getting that pretty soon. Okay.
Are we still on page forty-six?
I'm on forty-seven.
What would we, is we decide on forty-six?
Well, uh, the only ones I have, we took technology communication down two thousand dollars. Uh, other services, we took out for a thousand. We took out the fifteen thousand for the contractual volunteer fire department.
What does that pay?
Pardon me?
That contracts a volunteer.
So how, this might, that's a contractual.
We just gave him fifty thousand dollars each, so.
The fire departments where they've all signed the contract that they're playing.
So we're okay there?
Trees down or something, and they're the first ones on the scene that melt, so they're at the tree source.
So that other money you compensate for that?
That's what I thought you said the other night, since we were making a donation, that they would provide the services for free. No.
So that's what, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen thousand?
Or is that?
On the highway that we've taken out.
So you're on forty-seven now?
Forty-six. We were deciding what we had taken out, so thus far, it's only eighteen thousand that were taken out of the Highway General. Then on page forty-seven, is that what you have? Yeah.
Forty-seven, I don't see a whole lot of changes. I mean.
Uh-uh.
So I changed it like a six thousand dollars in budget. I mean, I was good with that. I went ahead to bunch, a bunch of these juvenile probation, you know, we got along. Lit correction under his donation services, same thing, we got along. Actually went down four thousand dollars. Institutional supplies, is that, uh, like your.
Are you on forty-nine?
Yes, I am.
Forty-nine.
Sorry, Mike.
On forty-nine, your, your institutional supplies?
Page forty-nine.
Yeah, you have nothing in this year. Last year, you, you touched with fifty grand.
That's Zach, the John Clark plan. You gotta move fifty thousand back out of lit into County General each year. So that was what you chose to speak before you write.
Good old Johnny. JC plan. We take it two ways. Lit public safety? That's new.
Okay. Y'all saw my email about what you did the other night with raises, right? Public safety will not be enough to cover that. And I know someone suggested to take it out of this correctional facility slip. But if we do, that, that's putting that. Over a million dollars in a fund that we don't expect to bring in that much. I mean, and I'm not saying that has to be decided right now, but you do need to understand what you're doing here. Which I can't do right now because you can't approve a budget for more than you advertised, so it would have to be an additional appropriation after the first of the year. But if it would be your intent to take the overflow raises out of here, you have to keep that in mind. I'm sorry.
I have an idea for that.
Okay.
So just leave us alone. Local public health services?
We've been here.
You getting dresses ready?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yeah, we gotta move on, ask the grant.
What are we doing, waiting for math?
Yeah.
Okay.
Page fifty-two.
What's doing this, my friend?
What?
Oh, it just looks like a few minutes. It's a strange word.
I see he's got new equipment on there too.
Well, we've already.
Yeah, but there's none in it.
On my notes, we've already.
He's got equipment for seventy-five thousand.
Right. On my notes from previously, we cut the gravel fifty thousand. We cut road signs five thousand. That's what I have. Is that what you have in your notes?
I didn't have any of that. Did I step out?
From equipment, I put down that we were going to cut it twenty-five thousand.
There's salt right there, forty thousand dollars. On page fifty-three, fifty-two?
Yeah. We're having so many conversations, it's.
So for gravel, did we cut that in two fifty?
Why do you want to cut the gravel?
I thought Sharon just said we, we had already cut fifty, so I've got it at two.
Yeah, we had from previous, we had cut the gravel fifty thousand. We kept road signs five thousand. Shipping and freight five hundred dollars. And equipment down twenty-five thousand, we're just gonna leave it at fifty. That's what I have in my head.
Are all the bridges taken care of? They have to be marked for heavy equipment? Is that why you got over thirty this year and not twenty-five? Cause last year was the first year of that.
You talking about the road signs?
Yep.
He just said a lot of signs have been stolen. That's what he said.
Those are the sheriff's board, those are the job.
You ought to be a collector.
So it's fifty.
So what is this one we cut there?
Scott? Twenty-seven, five, eighty, I guess.
Better alternative.
Eight thousand five hundred.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Eighty thousand five hundred.
I've been there too a few times.
What'd you say Sharon?
It's not fun.
I'm sorry, eight, eight thousand nine, eight hundred ninety-four thousand.
What is it?
Eight ninety-four.
Eight thousand. It might be eighty thousand.
I'm sorry, the, the total for the whole thing?
For page fifty-two.
I had eight hundred and ninety-four thousand? Everybody else?
Eight hundred?
Yeah, local origin streets.
You cut it down to eight ninety-four?
Uh, we. Yeah, yeah.
Where else?
That's what we've done.
Two hundred and twenty-five, fifteen hundred.
We just didn't raise anything, right? I think it was just, we just kept it at.
Yeah, we kind of kept everything the way it was the year before.
So you turned the, uh, the equipment, turn it back to fifty thousand, seventy-five?
Yes. Any other comments? It's on page fifty-two, Scott. We were just leaving it at the eight ninety-four.
Place at page fifty-three.
You what?
Fifty-two.
We cut anything else besides the equipment? Shipping and freight, road signs, twenty-five thousand, and instead of forty, that brings it back to around the eight ninety-four?
Yes. Okay, on page fifty-three.
I don't see the evolution, what changes? It increased a couple of things, but after, like, when he jumps up and says, hey, changes.
Right.
Reassessment, same thing.
Yeah, there's not that big of a difference.
Assessing services, yeah. It's going ten, up ten thousand dollars. I'm sure he hasn't got. Then report perpetuation, just be that long.
Where's this?
Say, I mean, what the software support is, is that, um, change, you don't turn software support, is that the county share for fifty-six? Sales disclosure?
I'm sorry, what about it?
What's the software support being for?
Three oh, five, five.
I always use the software.
Page fifty-four.
Some program that takes care of sales disclosures? I don't know exactly.
Thanks, Jane. Feel so invigorated.
Whatever it is, it's stayed the same since twenty twenty-one.
Now. We'll get the state line nine one one. On fifty-seven. Zack is gone. Can you just step out?
Chad.
Yeah, he'll be right back here.
Where's all the spilling software paid from?
The spilling?
All of it, yeah.
So with the newest upgrade, I'm not really sure because, um, we went through so many gamuts of this and that. Um, I had received a bill from Ranger Bolos. For like fifty-seven something for the software, because nine one one can't, it can only pay the software hardware updates, because we can't split it, it's too much money. But then, and I only budget, it used to be like twenty-five hundred, but now all of a sudden the bill came to me, it's fifty-seven, I had to come over and get some more money. Well. But Jeff left us an email not too long ago saying that that appropriate, that amount of money might, ought to have been the right amount. It should, we may not have paid nothing, so that should be reimbursed to us, but I haven't heard nothing since.
So like the portion that, um.
They're right, they're, what Jeff is saying, and I, and I don't, this is just what he said. Um, there may not be any software hardware support for us to purchase, so my spilling line item may go away, because that's the reason we had it.
So like Zack's portion that he uses for tracking maintenance and so forth and so on. Where is that money coming from?
That I don't know. Chad, you may have to half and half for a spilling situation, you say?
That's an agreement between us, I believe.
Yeah, it's like, it's like, the city pays half a spilling, county pays half a spilling. I don't know where their money comes from.
Would that be on a different day?
Huh?
Would that be on a different day?
There it is.
Here's that, that I don't know. Can't leave the room, we're talking about, we're talking about spilling.
Zack, it's a pretty, because it's come out, it didn't state like nine one one. What's that? Do you want to touch on any of that, what we, what we saw today?
Yeah. You want to talk about any of that?
Uh, yeah, I can. There, there's a new program that could take the place of our jail spilling that is completely free, it's provided by the state. We just got to make sure it works with spilling, because there's a lot of stuff with dispatch and, uh, the city police and our guys doing reports. So I'm gonna do some research on it, but the spilling maintenance for jail has gone, it costs us, and it's twenty-six thousand a year for everything, but the jail portion is a big part of it. It'd probably save the county fifteen thousand dollars if we can switch to this, so. We're gonna, I'm gonna look into, me and Mike had a Zoom meeting with him today, I'm gonna look into this.
Yeah, the data storage piece you talked about, when you were talking about them, the data storage?
What's that?
You, you have, you have to pay for a server for here, for the spilling, correct?
Yeah, which we just upgraded, so.
That, that, well, they're gonna, this is a cloud, that's why they're in offsite.
We would still be beholden to that server because we have a lot of.
Parts of pieces?
Yeah, we have a lot of, uh, our road deputies do reports in that system, so we would still have to use that and maybe some of that, but as far as the jail maintenance, we could eliminate possibly fifteen thousand, maybe more.
There's that, also the fingerprinting aspect of it, that you're not getting from spilling, that was like forty-eight thousand?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of options that we can get with this program that spilling is trying to charge us for, and we just don't have the money to do it, so. It would make our lives at the jail a little easier, and so make sure it works with everybody else. Once I figure that out, I'll bring it to you guys.
It's from the state, it's free of Odyssey, which I helped get in place with the courts, it, it works hand in hand with that. And so the state is covering all costs, they're, they're, it's free for the state. And, but we started with, um, Odyssey, well, twelve years ago, I can't count, twelve years ago I worked. That was a, a project I worked on with the blessed commissioner. And it saved the county fifty grand, and it got the sheriff's, finally got laptops in their vehicles and. Chad and I were up, um, who, he first got there, one guy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Chad was walking tall up there, his old rock stick in his hand.
Yeah.
But we, but it saves them time, it's all worth it, so. And it's all, and linked, and it's something, it's, it's very, very early in the state, like Chad, uh, Zack said, we just saw the demo today. I think Zack's got to be able to get in there, play with it a little bit, and hopefully. See that it's sanctioned by the Indiana?
Yeah, it's a grant, the Indiana Sheriff's Association is, uh, working to, to get this out, push it, and again, when they say free, it means free, so. For right now it is at least, and, uh, if we can switch to it, if it works, we can save a little bit of money.
So, and that, would that benefit the state too? Would they be able to save some money on that?
No, it wouldn't benefit them.
Okay. So for us, it's could be, it could be as much as seventy-five thousand that we're taking off our, out of our funds that we're gonna pay for every year. But let's say it's early, we, there's four counties that have it right now, and Putnam is gonna go next?
Yeah, they're, they're coming on board, yeah.
And they thought that if, if Zack, it was perfect there, and Zack said, yeah, it's great, and he said we could do it, um, he was interested in it. By latest end of January, mid-January, they could be up and running, with the data conversion is free, which is a big cost right there, so I don't know what that would save us.
Save a ton of money.
But, you know, um. I, we still have a budget, I think, for this year. You know, and I don't know, we already budgeted, where the money was coming from for that chat, uh, Zack.
The spilling maintenance?
Yeah, what'd you get, what do you have that under?
Uh, maybe lit.
Okay.
I think.
It was paid out of lit.
Yeah.
Okay. But that goes up to change.
It goes up three or five percent every year, so.
How much was it?
Twenty-six, six oh, one.
Okay. So.
Or is it twenty-six?
He's just adding the, the modules that they can get for free. And it's, they work this, this county to develop it to their needs. So hopefully we'll, Zack will have some, some good report to us here in the next, you know, few weeks, Florida done at least.
Okay.
Yes.
Sixty thousand dollars.
On this one, if we look at that top line, that was the email that I sent about, you can do email, Bob. The new Department of Labor rules, if you wanted Kelly to remain exempt from, or overtime, you would have to take her to that higher pay. So that would be less the six thousand raises that are coming out of public safety. Is where she would have to go, is why that number is there. And if that's not what y'all want to do, I can change that to whatever you want me to change it to.
But now, when she, if she gets the raise to where it needs to be, there won't be any overtime?
There would be no overtime. She would be exempt from overtime.
She would be exempt from overtime, so. And you were giving me some numbers.
Sixteen thousand dollar raise, she'd be hanging show up.
That's a good idea, Bob. That's the best I have for all day, so.
Dang.
I wouldn't.
No, they find me.
All the things I had, I had what you said, it'd be the six thousand dollar raise.
Give it not to sixteen for her.
Yeah, just, well, in here, what is that, from forty-four to fifty-two?
It'll give me eight thousand.
Yeah.
Eight thousand dollar raise. And that would put her exempt from overtime?
Yes.
So for right now, can you put in a?
Excuse me.
Six thousand dollar raise we talked about the other day?
Be an eight thousand dollar raise to put her in to be exempt from overtime.
Not her.
You're talking about the staff? Oh, I'm sorry.
Put him in here instead of public safety?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
You're sitting next to me.
And that's how it affects the budget.
You guys can add.
I was just testing Jane's, she was doing.
So, um, tested me.
Five or six thousand.
Pardon me? Mike's done their testing, he said.
Okay.
So we're going to want to go on to forty-two thousand dollars.
So on, um, are we going to go ahead and talk about the raise on the nine one one? You guys, what? Feel free to talk freely, I don't know, just keep going.
I'd like to get to this, I got a couple ideas, I'd like to bounce off of the council, Anne, Dale. It's maybe free of a million, one point four million.
I got one question first.
Like, are, I mean, are we going to do that tonight? That's what I'm asking, everybody's just kind of looking at each other and, um...
No, I'd, I'd like to get to, that's how we get this.
Yeah?
Where we at right now as far as getting to our, get to the?
For which fund?
County general.
We're at ten eight, last year we passed nine one, and that's with no raises.
So what's your idea, Mike?
Let's just finish this up. It's a secret. Well, that's it, that's it.
That's it?
Okay.
What do we want to do with this?
All right, so I didn't know, I didn't know that was the last page. I'm thinking, Dale, she said the tuck pointing, she's got to put it in. She said the tuck pointing wasn't going to be done all at one time.
I didn't say that.
I thought I heard somebody say that.
That was Tim. Um, that, that job could be, it could be split up into more than one project. That's not as cost effective as doing it all.
What are you talking about?
Are we speaking Boilermakers?
Tuck pointing for the courthouse.
No, not there yet.
The tuck pointing, to fix the brick on the courthouse?
Mike, the Catholic Church is doing it, it's over six years.
What I'm thinking, what I'm thinking is that eight hundred thousand dollars, that Levanda had interest or something, what was that?
She had, she expects to collect seven hundred thousand in interest this year.
Okay. If we throw that into our rainy day fund, and then we take your million, for right now it's not debt, so five, fifty thousand for your tuck pointing. Come back and get, get from the rainy day fund what you need, and you got, uh, five hundred thousand in there for something else. Page four. Tuck pointing?
No, but keep in mind on that interest, that is, it is already in here, you're already counting it, it's part of your county general.
Okay.
So it's like when we talked earlier, what the balance is in county general, that, that money's, they don't spend it more than once.
What page is the commissioner's on? There we go. Uh, so the million, the billion appear under four oh six oh one.
What page are you on, Mike?
Eleven.
We're going to county general in the commissioner's budget?
Yes. And I may be way off on this, Jane needs to get me back on course plan. We, we put it down to fifty thousand, and I, and I know you can't do the job at fifty thousand, I get it. But if we, if we can spread it out over a few years, it'd be better, easier for us to do that, and I agree with you, that's not as cost effective, it's, you know, they're there and you can do it, but I think it's, you know, what we can afford and not break the bank.
Well, that's my main interest. My plea to you all is do not spend more money than you've got coming in.
You got to repair equipment, some boiler, Bob, those benders, boilers, both needing to be fixed and so forth, the little bit of barbed parts you're in there. Do the same thing with that, but fifty thousand in there, go to the rainy day fund.
So do we even know how much the boilers are going to cost?
Yes. Pretty close, we're getting bids.
No, we don't. Okay.
The trouble is, nobody wants to do it.
Well, wait a minute, let Mike finish, let Mike finish.
Does that, does that make sense, Jane, at all?
Whatever you guys want to do.
So are you saying, put fifty thousand, say it again, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, but instead of the five hundred thousand he's asking for, give him four, give him fifty, and with the, with the expectation, he'll come back to us and ask, it takes a week to take it out of the rainy day fund. Once they get a firm number on the boilers. It tells, it tells you, you don't have a number, right?
We're getting one.
I've got, uh, I've got one estimate on boilers in there in the office. I don't remember the exact figure, but I can go get that.
You're looking between seventy-five to a hundred thousand on each one, right?
If you, if you wouldn't mind, that could be helpful. Yeah, then, the million dollars for the tuck pointing, bring that down to fifty thousand as well, with the, with the, they'll come back, uh, rainy day fund.
You're going to take that interest money and give?
It's already in the, it's already in there.
I had the bid for the tuck pointing at six hundred and nine thousand. And then the roof and the annex was going to cost, I don't know about that.
I'd rather take the interest money and the money and the thing, that, you know, no, it's not going to happen again, because, because of the government COVID. And give it bonuses too, please.
We'll get the raises and that bonus as well, so.
Right.
You can do the tuck, the tuck pointing for a third of the money. You go buy a lift. You buy all the safety fencing, you buy all the cones, you go to the staffing department and hire masonaries to come in and do the tuck pointing. When the job is done, you sell the lift and you get twenty, thirty percent of your money that you spent for the lift back. Takes a thousand hours to do it. You've got two people at thirty bucks an hour, so you've got sixty thousand dollars in tuck pointing. You've got roughly thirty in a lift. I mean, it's easily done.
That's actually, I have an idea.
It's easily done.
Does that include state prevailing wage that we have to pay?
Thirty bucks an hour? Go to the staffing.
State prevailing wage might be higher than that.
Go to the union.
You're still going to be ahead.
Well, I mean, it, it's not that I want to, it's under state law, and, and I'm only giving you my experience, okay? When I was on city council, we did the Miller building, okay? Two-thirds of the Miller building was paid by Patsy Miller, God rest her soul. Uh, but she could have paid for all of it. Because it was on city land, it had, we had to pay state prevailing wage. That, hang on, that cost an extra quarter of a million dollars to get that building built, just because of that and labor costs. So I just want to make sure we under, we understand here that when we're talking about doing
I can assure you.
A building, it's going to be, it's going to cost more than what it could be done privately.
I can assure you.
It's an option to.
But if you, you spend sixty grand, you'd be paying state prevailing wages. Thousand hours, and I'm, I'm not sure a thousand hours what it takes, maybe it'd take fifteen hundred hours.
Several state programs, so it's always going to be the case, but I think it's something to explore.
If you take it and you go to the staffing people to get these people, you don't pay the workforce comp, you don't pay the withhold, you don't pay any, you pay it, but you pay it as one number, you're not sitting here taking all of this out of... If, 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 if you pay them thirty bucks an hour, you, then you're going to pay their percentage, which I don't know what it is today. You've got thirty bucks. But regardless, you do the job for a third of the money that we're looking at right here. But it's not easy, you've got to go to work to do it.
That's something to explore, but. You're going to find a staffing, she has masons on end there.
All right, yeah, how many you want, Mike?
You have to go to union hall.
Go to the union hall.
Where's the union hall at?
Dale, how much is that boiler thing? Do this.
Sharon, I have one quote here.
I mean, Mike.
To replace it, or for sixty-seven thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars.
That's a good bid.
Is that here in the courthouse?
Sixty-seven, five fifty-four. And another quote, another boiler quote for eighty-nine thousand two hundred fifty-one.
What BTU are those boilers?
May I get pardon?
What BTU are the boilers?
This one here is two million, both of them are two million.
Is there only one boiler in the courthouse?
Two.
There's two?
One that doesn't work and one that's on its last legs.
Every boiler needs a backup.
So the sixty, so both of these quotes are for both boilers or just one?
One. And the one that's, we need one in the courthouse now. You can do the jail next summer and do the other one next winter if you wanted to.
So is that what you're thinking?
There, there will be additional soch on these boilers for coming.
How many do we have to have?
We actually, right now, we need two.
Are they permanent? Will they, will there be backups with those two?
Yes.
Well, yeah, you, you're going to replace the one that doesn't work first, that way it gives you a good boiler to go to the winter. And then when it works, it's your backup.
Are those local companies or are they, where are they from?
Uh, this one, this one here is from North Mechanical. We, we have a contract with, a service contract with, and, um...
Was that, were they the higher one?
They own both these quotes, but there will be additional quotes.
I just said, were they the highest one?
I've got only one.
So only one same company?
You're two prices.
Well, I know.
I called, I called two other companies today. One said they do boilers.
He can't talk about who's higher, who's lower, because he can't specify because he's in the bid process.
You can't do it without the specter of the boiler.
I know that. I was wanting them to come down and give us quotes, one said, we do them, we're not interested, I said, why, we're too busy, we ain't got time. Second one said, we do boilers, but it's small boilers, residential, I said, a boiler's a bore, well, we're not interested. That's what you run into, but we do have one other bid coming in, I know of.
Well, the guy's going to take a look at it anyhow, Bob.
Yeah, okay.
How are you going to get a quote if you don't have the spec?
You're just replacing a boiler, Tim, you're not building a whole new building.
Okay, but we just now have found out it's two million BTU.
He has all that information.
We have just now found out.
We did, but the people have been.
Put them in all the time.
Well, I understand that. She's saying he went to get quotes. How can he go get quotes if he doesn't know what?
They're coming here to do them.
They're coming here to look at the boiler system to see what it's going to take to replace them.
Okay, I misunderstood.
That's what I'm telling them, they're going to, I gave him his phone number, call and get with him, okay.
Who's on first?
I don't know.
Okay, so on this, on your plan, on your, on your plan, let's continue on your idea of what we were going to do.
Well, I, I, I was just thinking, take a million five out of there and put in fifty thousand free, we know it's going to be more than that. But it's, this is one of those ones that's better to come back after the fact than, than tie up a million five, that could go towards raises or things of that nature. I mean, if, if I'm not making sense?
I agree, I agree with it.
Then I'm screwed up because if you agree with me, then.
Meet the need, not the wishes.
Imagine that.
Better alternate reality.
We have to decide whether or not, what we're going to do about raises at this point.
Jane, does that, does that make sense to you? I don't even see y'all making this, but I'm, I'm, I'm asking you as a council member, does that make sense to you?
To take the million five out of here?
Yes.
And how much were you want to put in rainy day?
Um, we haven't determined, yeah, we said like one point four for rainy, rainy day fund right now?
Seven hundred thousand.
Just take this out of the budget, the, the one point five, and in place of each one, put just fifty grand. Like I said, we know that's not going to cover those costs, but until we, they get to that point and they come back, we can take out the rainy, rainy day fund.
That's what you guys want to do?
Well, what I'm thinking is, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, if we don't put the million five in there, but then we give them all the raises, and then we need, we come back and we keep saying we're going to have people come back and get money, what's that money spent, where's it going to come from?
The million five is for a rainy day fund, until we typically don't touch that.
At one point, yeah, we've got one point five cent in rainy day right now. He's talking about adding more to it.
No, I'm not adding to it in rainy day fund. This is, this is just freeing up money on the county general.
Oh, okay.
So you don't want to put anything in rainy day?
Hey Jane, where's the rainy day fund at? Where are we going to get it?
Sorry?
Where's the rainy day fund at?
We don't budget it, so it's not in here.
How many, how much can we add in?
A million and a half, but we pledged a half a million of it to the women's work release if needed.
That's right.
How much?
A half a million.
Okay.
You're right.
But you said it's like four hundred and eighty-seven thousand left for, in the ABCD account, whatever it's called?
ARCA.
Oh, that's what.
Have they drawn all that yet, Jane?
No, not yet.
Just one point five million into rainy day fund, right?
So we already pledged half million, right?
Yes, to the women's work release.
But we may not need, the place has not been used.
All those numbers are on that financials report in my fund.
Jim, we may not need it. That's, that's kind of my thought.
What's our capacity for raises, Jane, based off the numbers you figured out?
Well, right now, in county general, nothing. Sitting at ten eight.
So we would have to use bonuses to be apparent, we would have to use the eight hundred thousand.
No.
Did you hear what she just said?
If we take the one point five, it becomes our county general, it should go down.
Is that what everybody wants to do, take those out of there?
Put fifty in.
Three fifty thousand ain't buying you nothing.
I know.
But if we took that eight hundred thousand and put it in bonuses to those who are qualified and give the nine one one, I mean, I would include you guys. Because you get, you're getting raises, but the other people that's not getting raises, they could get a big bonus.
So not nine point four. With all raises. And so if we factor in three thousand for raise.
The bonus would be larger.
I know, but how do you sustain the three thousand if you're taking it out of the rainy day?
You just said maybe.
We're not moving. That's nine hundred fifty thousand dollars back in county general.
I'm just throwing this out here on an unappropriated line, just so I can get that total in there. If you gave three thousand dollar raises to county general full-time employees, not counting sheriff in jail, that would be a hundred seventy-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. So that would take you to nine point six.
That's your courthouse employees? Seven, how many you have in mind, Jane?
Um, hang on. I want to say there was eighty-nine, but if you take out the fifty-two that are sheriff in jail, the forty-some left.
Forty-some employees.
And how much of a raise is that?
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
So the advertised was eleven three, we're at nine six.
We took two thousand off of Jane's last year, I think, to meet budget, and I told her, I said, we need to get it back to them.
Two thousand off of what, Bob?
What were you talking about?
Pardon me?
Two thousand off of what?
To meet budget last year, we figured out that we could save that money to get back within budget by taking two thousand dollars off of what Jane's raises were going to be. And I told her I want them back this year if we could, to help those people out.
Yeah, you didn't give raises last year, so I think he's saying, since nobody got raises last year, for this to make sure.
Well, I said, even two thousand, it's just two thousand, and we cut it back a thousand.
Nobody got raises last year.
Nobody did? The year before, the year before. We got them four, couldn't get them the six.
No, the year before you gave two.
Yeah, whatever, Jane, okay, yeah.
Now, what about the other scenario, Jane? If we took the interest money and divided it up amongst the people that are eligible for the bonus?
For bonuses or raise?
Bonus.
Bonus.
I just wanna see what that number is.
Sorry.
And I'm not talking about nine on one of you guys. Sorry.
I'm on page.
I'll come back to your question. Right now, I'm gonna figure out something here. So it, it is forty-nine county general employees. And I'm sorry, okay, what was your question?
So what would be, if we took the, the bonus money, the interest money?
Okay.
And put that in a bonus figure, what would be the bonus amount for each employee?
I, I've not, I've not run those numbers, so I don't, I don't know.
I mean, can't you just take the seven hundred thousand and buy a nine on one employee?
Well, no, because you just said you were gonna leave out some of the employees and...
I'm just saying, we don't...
You understand, you're already counting that money. So if you're giving it away, you can't count that money as being part of your income for you that's gonna support this county general budget. So you can't give both raises and bonuses using the same money.
I know. I just wonder what bonus would be versus, I mean, not giving, I wanna see what's both, what...
See, that's just a hypothetical, I guess.
Yes, thank you.
So is the bonus better or is the raise better?
So in her mind, she's picturing that bonus money is divisible by X amount of full-time employees and part-time employees.
You don't have to...
That interest money's not gonna be sustainable.
Well, I know, we're understanding that, so it's one time.
I thought she said the bonus.
Get you a number for your total full-time employees. So this is gonna be all, all the budgets.
I've got a question for Jane.
Okay, there's ninety-five.
Take a number.
So are you, you would not give bonuses to sheriff and jail though? Because these numbers that I'm gonna give you are going...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not counting those guys.
Okay. So what about, like, I don't, I don't have any of the highway employees in here? So... So you're looking at...
I think there was sixteen is what I had.
A hundred and twenty, but if I take you guys back out, you said there's fifty-two of you guys, right? And then six over it, final one, so sixty-four. You'd be talking sixty-four employees. And if you were taking that full amount of the interest, you'd be given ten thousand dollar bonuses. Ten thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Dale's got a question for that, Jane.
I'm surprised Dale ain't had a heart attack already laying in the floor.
He did, he just seemed far over.
Can you speak, Dale?
There is sixteen county highway employees.
Okay.
I don't have the advantage of seeing the screen, but I, the question I had was the, uh, these rough figures that you're providing right now on raises, are you including PERF and OASI and those?
Yes. Yeah, I had, I had emailed a spreadsheet to all of the council members, actually a couple of weeks ago, that gave the, like, if you gave two thousand, if you gave three thousand, if you gave five thousand, you know, I did different. And then I had broken it down by county general, and then county general that's eligible for the public safety tax, and then everybody that was available for the public safety tax.
I have that if you wanna see it.
She's gotta print it out. Oh, it's telling him you had it printed out. But yeah, I did the total raises and I did the fringe, so I'm looking at the eighteen point eight five to be FICA and PERF on top of that.
I was curious about that point, because I know it, it cost the county eleven hundred eighty-seven dollars to give us out of the rate.
Right.
When you include PERF and OASI.
But this interest money's a one-time, kind of spooky thing.
Well, it's not just center, we use all, it's supporting county general right now.
It wasn't there before. It was something that we got, just because of the way things fell out because of COVID.
Am I over speaking here?
I'm just throwing it out as an option.
Sorry?
The, the bonus money's already in there.
I mean, it's part of that county general balance. So like, if you look and you say, "Well, right now, we have seven million dollars in county general," well, that's including that interest. So, so you can't, you can't budget based on that surplus, but then also give that surplus away.
I'm just saying, we got the seven hundred thousand dollars because of COVID and all that. Just, we got it by accident, basically.
The interest is probably based on the ARCA funds, that four million.
Right. It's an option. It's all. I'm just looking at it from a different angle, because...
Could use it for tuck filing too.
You know...
You tell that to employees.
Or it was a year ago, you and I were looking at the billing, and I said, "Jane told us we had four hundred thousand dollars we had to use, and it could be used for that." And we, have we lost that four hundred thousand, Jane?
No.
That we were gonna use toward the tuck, I said, "Get with Jane, because we can use up the four hundred thousand dollars for it," which would be a big cut out of what you're needing.
We've got, we've got more needs than we have money, Bob, but...
Really?
Oh, yeah.
I've had over fifty years of marriage. I don't know what that's about.
Okay, man.
Okay, we're gonna take a ten-minute recess. Okay? Be back in here at, uh, four-tilt. Let's go ahead and resume our meeting. All right, we were at, um...
Well, we were, county general, we're talking about, um, stuff out of the budget, we were talking about raises and bonuses.
Now, we're talking about the raises and bonuses. I did. Let's resume our meeting. She's ready to start, guys. Okay, so, um, when we were talking about this, we have two quotes for the boilers, and we were going to go ahead, and, and Mike was talking about, um, we, we were actually finding out if bonuses, what the bonuses versus raises would be, and I think we established that. So, moving on, um, what do you guys want? We're, what we had?
I'm not in favor of, of bonus. I think most employees rather have the raise. But they can, they can use, they can plan for the future. A bonus really can't plan, it's a one-time event, it's a gift. The taxes will come out higher, you can change the W-2, whatever, but you, you hit hard and taxes on, it's a little sum. Me personally, I think I'd rather have the raise, so I can always, I know it's there. And I know it'll be there next year.
Okay.
Have we, have we decided on, we're gonna give nine on one and shares for sure?
I'm trying to get back to that.
Okay.
That's page, I closed my book.
We're the last of the, we're not, we're last in the book, but we're not...
You're bringing up the rear.
I am, I am. Last for everything.
That's okay. Okay, there we are.
We've got some files.
Fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
Mike, in there, it's, it's to kind of stick with the six thousand for the raise, not go below that? See how the, the, that work, the public safety tax works, how much, how we're benefiting from it, so forth, and then, you know, maybe address them again next year. Okay, you're, um...
So, at six thousand, that, you had six employees?
It's five employees and now six.
Okay, but if you're not counting them, it's five full-time. We would not count her because...
Should we drop men down to forty-eight thousand?
I always count it if you give her the six out of the...
Out of, okay, we aren't counting them.
You don't have to though, you could, for sure, in this fund, but...
Are you going forty-eight thousand off? Drop to six thousand?
You would go to thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay, it's gonna be thirty-eight, okay. Well, she's asking for forty-two, it's bond, boy.
But you had mentioned that you have money that you can actually help give raises also.
Um, well, no, my, what is, is my budget supports what I do now. The thirty-twos and the forty-fours for me, and all the other stuff. So when I said that amount for seventy-eight thousand, that's what I would need additionally to support these new raises. I just lumped it into one sum, you know, at seventy-eight.
Why the big bump in overtime and holiday, twenty-five thousand dollars?
Well, we've hired more part-time, and there's some part-timers that really, they don't have anything else to do at work, so they're in there. We just, we haven't had as many part-timers as I do now, so we pumped up a little bit, paid it out.
That's ten-three-sixty-one. Most you've had to pay was that eight hundred dollars, seven-seventy-nine.
Where are you at for...
Right here, ten-three-sixty-one on page fifty-seven.
Okay, ten-three-sixty-one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I see it, yeah, twenty-five thousand. It is, uh, ten-three-sixty-one, overtime and holiday, at twenty-five thousand.
Okay. Sometimes she pays that out of forty-nine-twelve.
Yeah.
So if you, if you look at what I've got on the screen now, it's, um, last year's budget, that shows both twelve-twenty-two and forty-nine-twelve. So it shows the expenditures being eleven-five last year.
Okay.
For overtime and holiday.
So twelve thousand would be...
Is that up until now, or is that...
Well, that was, that was last year. I, I pulled, so you could look at a full year.
Okay, okay, for a full year.
She had eleven, she'd be over eleven thousand dollars in overtime pay.
Yeah, eleven-three-fifteen-seventy-eight.
Well, we can give her twelve thousand, cut that in half.
I mean, I was just saying, I can do this fund to help you, because I would. Like, we have stipends for supervisor and all that, coordinator for IDAX and everything, at two thousand, and then I'm the coordinator for the state files, and I ha, and by main, state mandated, I have to have an assistant. So it's twenty-four hundred each for the two, that's why that's forty-eight hundred, but I give up those, I, I'm on, on the forty-nine-twelve fund.
Oh, okay.
Is that on page fifty-seven, Jane? Fifty-seven, fifty-eight?
Yeah.
And the forty-nine-twelve.
I, I flipped over here just to get up.
Yeah, okay, so, you know, it would almost be worth, you know, to take the stipends from the people if we thought we'd get a good raise. But I'm not helping you guys. It's just taking away something, because I'm not in the general. Anything that you take from me just is in my own fund. So I can't even help get a better raise, because I'm taking something from somebody, because, again, we're standalone.
Stipend, can we win more?
For sure, I did it in the twelve-twenty-two.
They do, they do various jobs. Like, I mean, state files are no easy task, so if you look at supervisor job, they're the ones that, if I'm on vacation or my house, they're the ones that the guys can call and talk to. Um, so yeah, they do some jobs in there.
So in actuality, with, uh, ten-three-sixty-one overtime and holiday is twenty-five thousand, and then there's overtime and holiday on ten-three-sixty-one, ten, that's thirty-five thousand.
And that's paying your full-timers, their holiday pay, uh, when it comes around, and then it's paying the part-timers, where they are paid for the training, you know, they step in, and then, um, on the, onward they go. And so my part-timers get seventy-eight hours every two weeks.
Bet what was used was eleven thousand.
That might have been, I see. What year was that, Jane, on that?
Um, twenty-three, and now I'm looking at, um, in twenty-two, you spent sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yeah, we didn't have any part-timers. I just, okay, that's, these are the years that I worked radio, a hundred hours every two weeks.
So what is twenty-four so far, do we know? Do we have that?
Um, in the forty-nine-twelve, you spent fifty-three hundred so far. And then the twelve-twenty-two...
The forty-nine-twelve is the city share.
Nothing.
That's what the city gives us in the forty-nine-twelve.
And then the twelve-twenty-two.
And then the twelve point two is state income.
Yeah, so, so what has been spent so far between the both of them is fifty-three hundred.
Dale, have you looked into, um, I mentioned last week about potentially having the city take care of the funding for EMS, and it's taken on nine-on-one and the animal shelter? And it, because we, like you said, we could take our cats, just go play somewhere else, and all that funding goes with us. But we have to have an agreement, they will continue to provide ambulance service for the counties, and we will provide nine, uh, dispatch for the city. We have no say in their pay raises. We have no say in how many people they hire. We, we, it's in a contract, but we're not adhered to. We have more oversight on nine-one-one than they do, kind of saying, "Oh, we can give raises," and they really can't do anything. They, uh, send someone over and say this is for pay raises, but then again, we don't have to listen to what they say. Like, what did they give us last year, Jane?
Okay.
They gave us twenty-five thousand last year?
Two.
City?
Four.
Raises for the nine-on-one?
Twelve, twelve, yeah, twelve.
So, but I mean, we gotta think that's all, done what we wanted, and we did not have to give them that as a bonus or a raise, whatever we did.
We didn't, we just gave twelve. We didn't get a bonus for the raise. Because we got the twelve from the city, so we didn't get the bonus.
Do we do the twelve?
The twelve they gave, the city gave us, we gave them. It's, it went into my forty-nine-twelve fund.
Okay. We have to give them, give them raises, we did.
The, the stip, the stipulation on that?
Right.
Was that when they gave us the additional twelve thousand, they gave us a hundred and twenty every year, but they give us additional, so now I get one thirty-two a year from them. But the twelve thousand, what, the stipulation was they had to go to wages, so...
Part-time.
Part, I mean, twelve thousand's money, but, I mean, you write, I mean, you write on it.
Okay, on line ten, uh, one-zero-one-nine-zero is sixty-five thousand. And then on the other, you have part-time at fifty thousand.
Yeah, because like I said, we've got more part-timers, and, um, for instance, this year, I've had to, since I've accumulated the more part-timers, I've appropriated a little bit different money.
Okay, but wouldn't, I mean, that's like a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Wouldn't it be, uh, more feasible to hire someone?
Oh, you mean another full-timer?
Yeah.
I've asked for that too, and it's...
Well, no, I'm just saying, with you, with this being in there, part-time sixty-five thousand, and then the other part-time is fifty thousand, so...
Did you see the spreadsheet I sent today about nine-on-one?
Yes, but I haven't got to really look at it, so correct me if I'm wrong.
It would not be feasible to hire a full-time.
Okay, I did see that. Okay, yeah, because it would be...
I mean, I'm just saying that was our, the past talk as well, so...
Yeah, you're right. I read it, and I, I wasn't thinking that.
So basically, you know, for my fund, when I do this budget, um, since it's my own budget, okay? Uh, I just go ahead and, and give those totals for the part-time, because there's training, like, right now, um, dispatchers have to acquire forty hours of credit hours of each year. At the end of each year, they have to have credit training hours, certificates. um, dispatchers have to acquire forty hours of credit hours of each year, at the end of each year, they have to have credit training hours certificates. So all my employees right now are getting those certificates done periodically through their day and night of working. So they're in there and they're getting paid for, like, if they come in on their day off and do two hours of a module to train, they're gonna get the two hours pay, okay, so it's, it's a requirement of money to, cause I said, like I said, we have to be compliant with forty hours every year of a dispatcher to be having certifications, other than what we have to have to work.
In digital, nine-one-one maintenance. Who's that coming from?
So that's our, uh, nine-one-one vendor, and, um, are you talking about the eight thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so when, uh, the nine-one-one was first put in over there, it was in, it's in digital, and, uh, when it was all brand-new, and that amount every year was like twenty-five hundred, that was the starting point of any of the nine-one-one system in there. Then as years rolled by, clear up to my time as a director. Um, we never could upgrade the system, we couldn't afford it, it was always, you know, controversial thing, so it never got done. Well, like last year or a little bit before last year, we started dropping nine-one-one calls severely. I mean, we'd call the number back, but the calls would come in locally and it would just drop, you couldn't even talk to them. It wouldn't match, and there was a lot of glitches in the nine-one-one phones, so we had to upgrade that system. And so now, from twenty, twenty-ten-ish, twenty-eleven to now, that maintenance fee at twenty-five hundred every year went up to eight. Cause for our new fangled, I paid twenty-eight thousand dollars to put the new system in. We have a monthly, um, maintenance fee of two hundred and twenty-two dollars that I spend, and then once a year we pay eight. And, and they maintain that system, um, every day, all day, all week, they, they're voice testing and making sure we're fine. So that's what we pay for. It's just called technology got higher. We skipped around a little bit and it buy the in-between stuff, and so we went from twenty-five to eight, just.
Which one's, which one are you looking at now, Bob?
Ten, one zero two zero zero. No, one zero two one zero.
Retirement.
Yeah.
Last year she asked for twenty-five and spent twenty-three eight. So that was actually pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of these things are, uh, like the recorder for seventy-three hundred, that's a state, that's a standard price every year as a change. We have to have recorder.
Ten three fifty, your holiday pay's taking a big jump, up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Ten what?
Ten three fifty.
Page fifty-eight.
I got it, um.
Got that.
Why is that, Jane? I'm seeing what I did have in the last, but I think it's because, I do believe it's because I have more employees on part-time, not that they get holiday pay, but I, but put that up like that more for the part-time rather than I'll, over, rather than holiday pay.
Cause the most you spent is five thousand, I'd just say six thousand.
For the whole year.
Ten thousand, big plenty.
So then, um, we have how many more holidays to go for each employee?
This year.
That's for next year, Kelly.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Duh, I knew that, and I just, okay, well, I mean, yeah, that's.
Pay out the holiday pay line anyway, so you could eliminate that.
The what? Yeah, that's what I was gonna talk to you about that, Jane, we had like a, there's a holiday pay and an overtime and holiday pay.
So eliminate the fifty-two thousand.
Maybe we should hedge one, some of it?
Yeah, I think you would get rid of the fifty.
Yeah, cause we don't get rid of the fifty now.
Get rid of?
So then what would you put in there, since I had two different totals, Jane?
Two hundred dollars.
Okay. Is that two, okay, two zero zero point zero zero, or? What would you do, Jane, I have ten in the one and fifteen in the other, would you call it even, like, cause I mean, I'm gonna need.
Right, right now, you've asked for ten out of forty-nine twelve and twenty-five out of twelve twenty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
So right now you're asking for thirty-five, but you've not spent more than. Like, like last year, your total between the two funds was only eleven thousand.
Just got a big party plan.
Yeah, okay, well then, would you do the, the twelve that they suggest, or would you just do fifteen since we're gonna combine the lines? Half of thirty-five?
Yeah, the year before you spent sixteen, I was looking.
Okay, so you wanna do fifteen?
Like, pre-fifteen on the overtime and holiday pay line?
Yeah, because we're gonna merge the, the other line.
So on the ten three six one, or where are we at, overtime?
On fifteen thousand instead of twenty-five.
Yeah, I think we're taking out the three sixty, we're not gonna have just the overtime, we're having the, the.
Yeah. And the other one, we're going to fifteen, three six one.
Okay. On twelve twenty-two, are you gonna leave the twenty-five thousand in overtime and holiday pay on that budget?
I thought that's what we were taking down, fifteen, am I on the wrong one?
I was, I was on the other one.
Okay, sorry. I was on the, uh, ten three six one, which one were you on?
The, the four, um.
Or you're on the forty-nine twelve, okay.
To me, on this budget, you want to at least approve a hundred and thirty, because this is the one that the city gives us money and they wanna see this every year. And if we're not spending the money that we give, that they give us, they're not gonna keep giving it to us.
So keep that at the hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Fifty-eight. Yeah, so we'll be taking the holiday pay out.
So Jane, on this, uh, I'll tell you where we can do that. On the part-time line, the one ninety, you see over here, now, last year I only spent, what, uh, forty, or, I spent thirty-one last year?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I wanna take that up higher because I've been, I've been how many, appropriating? I wanna take that up higher and have it left for on.
I just took it to sixty then.
Yep.
And that'll keep you at the one thirty?
Yep.
Everybody getting that?
Yes. On page fifty-eight.
Well, it's actually one thirty-two.
Well, yeah, but all you requested was one thirty, so we can't approve more than you requested.
Yeah, cause I tried to keep it under the one thirty-two, so, one, two thousand bucks.
So then if you go back to the twelve twenty-two,
Okay.
if you approve fifteen in overtime and holiday in the other budget, she doesn't need twenty-five here.
Okay, so.
She's not spent more than sixteen in fighting wars.
So are we taking the twenty-five out, is that what we was talking about?
Shall we take that down, so Jane, I'm gonna use your knowledge?
I'm looking at the year, another, a prior year, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would think maybe you could go leave it at five, that keeps your bounty between the two?
Yeah.
What's, what's the number say?
Cause you got fifteen in the other one, so then if we put five in here.
Okay.
Ten three sixty.
Thank you.
Yes.
How much should we, scroll back up on that console.
Are we taking ten thousand out?
The console on radio, I, I really, I thought that was fifteen hundred, but I forgot.
Okay, damn.
Oh, no, yeah, that's my bad.
Five, because she had.
Well, because it's new, they, they do do, they'll come in and do some maintenance cables.
Yeah, you had requested it.
I'm picking that out.
Yeah.
What about the ten on three six?
Holiday and statewide city share. Are we at the hundred thirty?
Yeah.
Cause we're leaving now that it's one thirty for this.
So there are seminars and trainings for me.
Leave that alone.
That, there's a, like, there's a track conference coming up in September to stay.
Twenty-five thousand, fifteen.
Um, we don't do travel and safety, or travel and mileage.
Five.
Overtime and holiday.
Yeah.
We're going fifteen or five?
Five.
On five thousand.
The information technology was put in there for Mike, for Michael, you see where that's at? Do I not pay that no more?
That's what the things commissioners took over.
Okay, so you probably erased that line, or, you know, deleted. The meeting expense does not have to be in there, because they just hook the two, it's usually a two-hour meeting, and they'll hook it to their time. It's not overtime or anything, you know, it's not, it's just two hours of meeting.
How's the rest of it look with everyone else? And on part-time on ten one nine zero, I have down thirty-five thousand, is that right?
Okay.
In my notes.
We bumped it to sixty-five thousand.
That's what you were asking for, is in my notes, I have thirty-five, am I wrong?
I wanna stay at sixty-five, John, because I've been doing appropriate, you know, transfers.
Yeah.
One zero one nine zero, I'm just.
I mean, I mean, if you look at the year before, she spent almost sixty-two.
Okay, I see that, yeah, I don't know why I have thirty-five on that.
I'm leaving it at fifty.
No, we're leaving it at.
Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five. On the part-time.
So fifty now, we're giving her fifteen hundred?
No, page fifty-seven.
Part-time sixty-five thousand, even that there?
Yes. Cause in twenty twenty-three, she spent sixty-one thousand, she spent like sixty-two thousand, so.
Always gonna need that piece, huh?
So how much have we cut that then, more?
On the twelve twenty-two, we've gone from four sixty now to three eighty-two, six fifty-six.
Three eighty-two? But the raises were put in there, right?
No, the raises are left in public safety.
Right, that's what I'm saying, a little bit.
The, the only, I, I did increase part of Kelly's, because if it's your guys' and it's your guys' decision, it's your decision to take her to the fifty-eight, six fifty-six, and then you make her exempt from overtime, this would be, a part of it would have to come out of right there, and then the rest could come out of, the other six could be part of public safety, or you could make the full amount come out of here.
Well, since I cut my budget, could you just use my own money for me? And let the five go for the public safety tax? I mean, look, see what that brings you out to.
I mean, you gotta decide if that's how you want to treat her going forward.
Comment, everybody's quiet, what, what do you wanna do on that?
So my money just helped, my own money just helped my, my, my salary, and then now you've only got five of my people.
Right, but we gotta get, we gotta get our number down.
We went from four sixty on the three eighty-eight, is that okay?
It was four sixty, down to what, was it down to three eighty-two, or three eighty-eight?
Three eighty-eight.
So it came down to three eighty-eight.
Will that work, Jane, if we did, take hers out of the, what we just saved?
Well, because, yeah, cause it's, it's a state fund, so if I support my own wage and then just take my five people, and that's all you'd have to, I mean, not all, but that would only be what you include, you wouldn't include me in the safety tax. What do you think, Jane?
So you're at thirty-eight thousand three six one now.
You say what you just saved, you're approving a budget that's sixty thousand more than the year before, so you didn't save anything.
Okay, I.
You're, you're just, you asked for four sixty and you got it down to three eighty. I'm sorry?
Yeah, so you know. It doesn't make sense.
Do what?
It's, it, on our side, it's different, oh, yeah.
Well, I was, I said, I can, since we cut a little bit, I can support my, my wage.
I, I hear what you're saying, but on our side, we have to be there.
Would you stay one, statewide nine-one-one bring in last year, or for this year?
I don't, it's the same every year, what, you know, twenty-three? I have to go back to my other stuff and look too.
Okay, last year we received three hundred and thirty-eight thousand into that fund.
So we.
So there's the monthly amount, and then once a year, they'll do a supplemental if there's anything extra.
And we never know what amount it is, Jane, but I don't, until it goes in.
I mean, the year before in that fund, the receipts were three thirty-two.
So we're actually over.
Year before that, three thirty-four.
We're over by what, seventy thousand? Forty, forty thousand?
If you normally bring in less than three forty, then you're over by forty-eight thousand, for what you expect to bring in.
We have earned two hundred and fifty thousand dollars now for wages, right, and herself included, approximately?
It was two oh four, two hundred and four thousand without the raises, uh, what I'm, I think.
Well, two eighteen, since we raised you.
So. But I'm thinking when I added it up, it was two oh one total, but I had already, we'd already, I already paid on that. So that's a difference of six, sixteen dollars? Or, I, sixteen dollars, no.
We could prove that.
I know. Sixteen's the right figure, but not dollars.
Okay.
So the two hundred and eighteen, six fifty-six, is that the, uh?
That's wages only.
The wages, yeah, wages only. So are we gonna pay her overtime or put her at that fixed rate?
Well, based upon what we've got now, so far, we wouldn't have to pay her overtime.
If you take her to that one amount.
Which we did, fifty-two thousand, right?
Jane, Jane put the standard in, I don't know what she did.
Well, Jane asked if you could, if you did fifty-two, how it fits you in the overtime, no overtime.
So the fifty-two puts her out of that situation?
Yeah.
No, probably not tonight, cause this has to be down by September sixth. Oh, yeah, we're gonna have to, sure.
Okay, I just put some numbers in here, so if y'all wanna look. It just hit me as we're talking, the rate, the number you're looking at, that thirty-two thousand and that forty-four for her was what you adopted last year, but after the adoption budget processes, when the city came back and said, we'll give that extra twelve thousand dollars if you give raises, so what they are all currently making are these numbers in your twenty twenty-five notes. Not, not the numbers that were in there for last year's adopted budget.
Now, it's not counting those extra stipends?
It's not counting them, because this is a flat, and then, cause the few people that get the stipends have the extra, but it comes out of the forty-nine twelve. That's why you don't see it on here.
I'm just a little confused, Jane, I'm saying we had proved thirty-three thousand, I have a.
I just, I just changed your, I just changed your numbers, you approved thirty-two thousand in last year's budget, which was in September.
Yeah, but we proved thirty-eight this year so far, right?
Well, no, if you give them six thousand dollar raises on top of the thirty-three, they're gonna be at thirty-nine.
The thirty-three is the difference between the twelve thousand city. So it's gonna be thirty-nine thousand per employee at a six thousand dollar. At $6,000.
So the 6,000 would be added to 33, 144, right?
Yes.
Be 39.
And that would be. Anything on the pressure.
You two do your own training, Kelly?
Yes. We, we pay for it, or the state pays for it. So it's, it's got a wealth of many, many, many topics that we can take the different modules on. You watch, we take tests, you get your test certified. It stems from domestic violence, suicide, hazmat items, just different things that might come into dispatch that we need to have a better, a better understanding of, or how we can handle the calls.
Why don't you go make a payment visit, Bob?
Jane?
Yes, sir.
Would it make sense to take, um, that 65,000, what was that? Part-time? Over to? 450.
Okay.
I don't understand what you want to do.
Well, we want, we want to be done with 330, 330,000, right?
Okay, by moving it to another budget that can support it?
I took a little piece off.
Okay.
I'm just, that's what I'm asking.
We need to.
Okay, if public safety.
We haven't finalized the sheriff stuff yet.
Okay.
I'm just asking.
I mean, you could, you can pay them out of public safety if you want to, but not, unless you change what you've already done in public safety.
Right, kind of like.
Okay.
Just, is that a guess, on a 340-some?
If you took out the 55, it would get you 320, down to 329. But then would you be given the raises here? And all you're taking out is, you're just taking out the 65?
That's my thought.
I'm sorry?
That's what I was thinking.
Why are we cutting the 65 down, too, Mike?
I'm just saying, move it to the public safety tax. I know that we can't, as a standard now, it can't be supported to do that.
Yeah.
But I was just, I'm just throwing out there, so maybe we could do.
Okay, if you gave the $6,000 raises for the five full-time dispatchers, and if you took Kelly up to meet the Department of Labor, no overtime thing in that, and took out the 65,000 from her part-time, it's going to put you at 359, 376 in that budget.
We've already lost 150 of it.
And my social security and retirement and group health, they're all good. On that one? Nothing we can remove from there. Because I didn't quite use the 32.
Okay, so you would need for this, social security, Medicare, and FICA, you're going to need 47, 48,000.
So then I've got 64 listed.
Yeah.
So what are we, what are we taking that down to?
I mean, you could, you could reduce.
Could reduce those, sure. That's what I'm saying, like, I think I just keep that number every year going, that 32,000. I don't, you know, sometimes, I mean, Jane's pretty good about letting me know.
We need to recoup what we can get right now.
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, I was looking, too, at the past expended, you know, years, and I, and I didn't even spend 32.
Yeah.
So I was just seeing if that would make a change with that.
So 32, can we reduce to 25? Or 20, 25?
She's done the figures, Bob, hang on here.
20.
And then 28.5. You can take that one down to 28.5.
Okay.
The 32?
We need like.
What about the unemployment, can it come down a little bit, too? Are you at retirement right now, Jane?
Yeah. She just changed the retirement.
28.5, is that it?
28.5. Yes.
Here we go. You want to go? So over here, I've also got 25 and 27, is that too much also? On retirement and group?
Um, I don't know, hang on. 600, okay, and unemployment in the last couple of years, we've not spent more than 650, so you could take that down a tiny bit.
About 1,000. That'd be enough.
You could, no, you could take it down to 1,000.
Take travel and milers down to 1,000. Or, I'm sorry. I was looking at something else, I wouldn't have found, never mind. What else is down below that, Jane? Just the end of.
Gee, Kelly, you took money off in your telephone, not going to talk as much?
The state actually pays for part of it now, it's been nice, that used to be a budget of 30,000.
Really?
Yeah. Since I've been in the office, I've, it's been down to that.
Do they do that for us, too?
I don't know.
Jane?
What about the GIS mapping?
You put the, you put their raises in here?
I'm sorry?
You put the raises in here?
Yep.
I did.
What would it look like now if they weren't in there?
Or we would be way below.
Okay, we took out the part-time. And put the raises in, so now you want to take out both the part-time and the raises?
I'm just saying, take her, take everything out for her out of public safety and not. Do what now?
I thought we were doing the raises out of public safety.
We are.
Well, okay, when you said you want to take the part-time out of here.
Sorry?
I thought, when you said to take out the 65,000 and put it in public safety, I thought you said put the raises in here.
If I did, I missed the point.
That's what I understood, that's why I was asking to take it back.
That's what I thought you said, too.
Okay. If that's what's up, I apologize.
There we go.
You got nothing better to do, Jane.
I like the raises better because we're only a little bit, a little ways off from getting it down to what we need to be.
We're leaving this in, right, part-time?
I mean, if we can.
I just don't understand where you're trying to go when you've already overspent your public safety. Putting more in public safety.
Because dress the sheriff. Conceal.
Okay.
There. I'm also kicking around 45 for the fire departments, give back the 5,000 for the tree, down trees and limbs. What is your contract status?
Contract status?
If you, if you lose that, if you give, you guys, you guys wear that contract, for the $5,000, what does that do for you?
Well, it depends on how the county highway really wants to do it. Because that $5,000 per volunteer partner right now, is we've all went out and bought the chainsaws and all the equipment to remove the trees from the roadway, which cuts county highway budget, cuts overtime out of county highway budget, so if trees are down during a storm, take all their people out, as long as we can handle it, the fire departments go out, cut the trees. We have to wait for the power lines to be shut down. Cut the trees, remove them, off the two to the side of the road, which you have to actually clear the side of the road with safe travel, you know, and everything. And then we go back home, otherwise the county highway had to send people out. The other thing that helps also is like the sheriff's department, there's only one deputy on duty, and the road's blocked with a tree, and he gets called away, then county is liable if a car comes around the curve and hits him. If we're called out, then we're there until everything's cleared back.
So does it make sense to do 45 and 5, to put the 15 back in, split it three ways? You're still getting 50.
That, it all comes out the same, yes.
Helps us on our end, it would help us try to get to where we have to.
It's only 15,000, I mean, but.
Yeah, you know, and it's however you guys want to merge the different monies and everything. Like I said, Jane's familiar with the county highway contract as well, I do film out every year and everything, so 15 for three departments. You know, I don't know how she would want to redo that, but I think the overall goal is if we can stay at the 50 in income for the fire departments. I think that managing the trees would be something we would be willing to help with, without losing money. You know, with that 50, we'll say, yeah, we'll still continue to go out and help highway budget out, does that make sense? Am I explaining myself right?
And Jane, what I've done, I know you visualize things in numbers, I visualize 3D for architecture and so forth. But what I do is take a puzzle piece, and it'll corner, where's the corner, where's my edge pieces? And I'm visually, you know, I'm kind of looking at it like this. I know that those numbers won't work that I threw to you, I know that. But obviously, what can we move around? You know, give them 45, and give the 15 back out of the highway. It, it serves a better purpose to do like that, because like you said, then the road deputies are, the deputies aren't tied up necessarily all the time. So I mean, if it makes sense to do the part, their raise out of here, that's fine.
I see what you're saying.
Okay, because I don't see what's up.
So we take the, the volunteer fire department would take them back to 45, we talked about, I mean, from 50 to 45, put the 15,000 back in the highway, where they help through them, fire department. Just shifting the money around.
Makes sense to everybody else?
To help our bottom line, to get what we need to get. I didn't think it was 15.
It's 5,000 for each department.
Yeah. Okay. They would still get 50, it's just they're going to get 45 from here, and the rest from the highway. I don't know, it'll help us keep in the public safety tax capacity that we have.
Sure. I do want people to understand, though, when we do go out, though, if that tree is so mammoth that we can't cut it, sometimes we do call for the county highway to bring the loader, something out to help us get that.
Right.
Because we've had times, well, on 121, if everybody remembers that, we had like six trees that went down on top of each other. There was no safe place to cut it. They came out and helped move some trees around with the loader and stuff, so we could cut them. So I'm not saying we would never call them out to assist us in that, but we go out and personally try to.
You do the most that you can, yeah. So where are we at on that? What would it look like if we did the? Bless your heart, you've had these.
She's a whizzo, I mean, she is all over it.
So what would it look like putting the?
She says she don't know where we're at, we're lost.
I know.
Where's the county highway?
I put it back in, the 15 back in the county highway.
You put it back in?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I narrowed that line, and then I took the public safety down to 135.
Wait, can you go to the safety tax again?
Do what?
Can you go to the safety tax here tonight, or?
That's what we've been doing on the 911. We're using that part of it. If we did the sheriff's department at 7,000 for 40 of them, and then 10 of them out of the jail lit, and then give 911 6,000, I think that would make the safety tax work. It would be very appreciative. Is Zach still over there?
Yeah.
So what are you, how can we get yours up to where they need to be? Come over here, we can see you.
Ooh, sexy, Kelly.
Yes, you do. I'm like a school teacher, come over here, we can see you. Well, it's like I'm peeking around the. You know I'm talking about Zach's, did that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense, it's, uh, it gets us to where we need to be. I think that Jane can do the numbers, but I think the money's there.
So when did you say 7,000? I said, for 40 of them, we'll do 7,000, and then take 10 of them out of jail lit. And Kelly gets in 6,000.
Yep.
Fire department goes back to 45,000 apiece.
And then 15,000 for the highway.
And 15 from the highway.
Which is the highway.
Yeah, so it's 40 sheriff department at 7,000 each, 10 of them out of jail lit. And Kelly, $6,000 for 911. And I did enough. Okay.
It's, uh, sounds good to me.
Yep, and then 3,000 for courthouse. Okay. 3,000 for the courthouse.
Employees.
I'm just talking employees, just. Oh, I'm like, where's that?
She's going to find the courthouse for $3,000.
Okay. But that's not counted down, is it?
No, no.
Okay.
This is the donations, that's the fire department's money.
Yeah.
Overdue, over.
So where does that go, Jane? I got so many numbers here. Any racing? On the sheriff, where does that put the sheriff's?
Donations. Sheriff's 22.
Okay, if you, this ain't even counting that you put your 65,000 in part-time in here, just the raises. It's 6,000 for 911, and 7,000 for the sheriff's department. It was going to be a total of 425,000. Which this budget can only handle 307. And again, that number's not even, that 65,000 that you wanted to move also over here. So it's going to be 425 plus another 65, so 480,000.
490.
You've got 307 available, so you would have to come up with the difference.
Well, what, did you take 10 out of jail lit? 10 people?
Did you 50 for the sheriff's department, 40?
I'm sorry?
Did you do 40 for the, for the sheriff's department, and then 10 out of jail? Lit, if that's what she was saying.
No, I mean, right now, I'm just saying your total raises. Not even counting anything to do with your 65,000. Your total raises, even dropping the sheriff to 7,000, it's going to be 425,000. So if you take your 65,000 in part-time and put it out here, and then you've got to put your extra social security and Medicare on that, now there'd be no retirement, because they're part-timers. But still, you're, you're looking at wanting to spend 500,000 in a budget, you've got 300 to spend. So you would have to take, let's say, 200,000 out of jail lit, which you've already budgeted more than you can expect to bring in. Not counting moving any of that stuff.
Well, we don't have to move it 65 over, that was just a thought.
Okay. But even if you don't move that over, you're still looking at taking, I mean, that whole spreadsheet.
425.
Like you would have to take 130 out of jail lit.
Did you figure 50 jail staff, or 15?
I think there are 52 existing jail and sheriff employees right now.
50. 50, we only have 50.
Okay.
We'll have to, we'll have 50, we'll say.
Yeah, I'm saying 40 and 10.
Can you take 10 out, 10 of those sheriff people out of there?
So you're saying, oh, they do 40?
But that wouldn't, I mean, it's still not going to get you where you need to be. At 7,000, at 7,000 raises, you've got to move, like, at least 20 of them.
Can that be done?
What about 50, 5,000?
Can you do 20 more?
Oh, a raise, she said 5, maybe.
No, not for the sheriff.
She said that, yeah, they got 5, I heard, but they're on 75.
We can't take more out of jail lit.
Seven is what they need to be comparable to.
You want to be comparable?
Twenty out of, twenty out of public safety, twenty out of jail lit.
No, you've been thrilled with seventy-five hundred, but you're happy with five.
I missed that conversation.
I think the council.
Okay, so in the email that I sent Saturday, looking at these raises. Your jail lit right now, you've got a budget of nine hundred and eighty-six thousand. You're only gonna get nine hundred and twenty-six, so you're already budgeting more than you can expect to bring in. So you're gonna be cutting into your surplus, which there is a little bit of a surplus there. But that surplus is partly, we've already factored that in when we're saying, we know that's gonna go away at the end of the time. So kind of back to your drunk clock spreadsheet, one reason Zach moved out fifty thousand this year. So if you start cutting into that surplus, then you're shorting yourself. And that's with not putting a single raise in there, that you're already cutting into your surplus. So if you start putting raises in there and you're budgeting over a million dollars, then you're really cutting into your surplus. And eventually, that is unsustainable.
Right.
And never mind weaning ourselves off of that because we know that lit's gonna go away. So you, I mean, you're really kind of creating a nightmare there.
We budgeted nine eighty-six, but we're expecting to get, uh, what, a hundred and twenty from community corrections to reimburse the salaries. Am I right?
Well, assuming on that.
How much was that again?
Hundred and twenty thousand.
Uh, I mean, they're gonna pay for three employees, so whatever that totals up to after the raises.
But, okay, partly when you budgeted the three ninety, you didn't budget for social security or retirement out of that. So that's dropping your three ninety down to three twenty-eight. And if all your people get, all your people are getting raises, that three twenty-eight, what's your average jailer gonna make if they get, well, a seven thousand dollar raise?
Uh, forty-three.
Okay. I'm paying for seven and a half employees. So that is already taken into consideration that community corrections is covering that rest of them.
But I thought the, uh, the extra was coming out of something different.
So if you're just paying base pay out of here, you're still paying either thirty-six, thirty-eight, or forty, right? Okay. Just say they're all brand new and they're making thirty-six. So nine, so you could cut that number by two.
How much, how much does a seven thousand dollar raise actually cost? Do you multiply that by eighteen percent?
Okay, if you pay seven officers out of here at the thirty-six thousand dollars, that's what your revised budget's gonna look like, but no raises coming out of here, nothing else coming out of here, just seven officers at thirty-six thousand each. So that would take that budget down to eight ninety-one. And then what was your question, how much does a seven thousand dollar raise cost?
Yeah, how much does it actually cost?
Eight thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty cents.
Or man.
How much off were we to getting nine-one-one where they needed to be? What would happen if we did a five thousand dollar raise?
Okay, we're still talking public safety, right?
Yes, yes.
Maybe a thirty-eight, one forty-four without all the other stuff.
Zach, how much do yours and Kelly's difference right now between what you're paying their people?
Uh, we start out, as a jail officer, we start out at thirty-six thousand dollars, what she starts out at?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-three.
So about three thousand dollars.
It's thirty-two.
It's thirty-two, it's, excuse me, it's thirty-three with what you got from the city, it's thirty-three.
Oh, that's right, duh, 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 duh. I'm sorry, Scott, you're correct.
And what's the city pay, fifty-two?
I think, something, starting off.
Ninety-one, fifty-five.
And then it's posted a job, fifty-two to fifty-five thousand.
I looked up Franklin County, uh, last year, they were hiring, starting off at fifty-two. I don't know if they got pay raises last year or not. It's a big county, hard to compare to them.
One of the biggest in the state, but.
Rush County starts off probably more than that.
And that kind of gets us away.
Yeah, Rush County's gonna pretty good.
Yeah.
What's that? For a jail officer, forty-six for a road deputy, thirty-six for a jail officer.
You don't go four fifty east or three fifty west, it's McGuire Ridge, it's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You better know your roads.
Down there.
Yeah.
Thought you'd give us seven, that puts us.
If you, if you give all of them seven.
Let's compare it with the city police, that's what I would say.
Five.
It would cost, well, three forty-seven and then add in the fringe, four twelve, four of nine, it's a four, four twelve, four ten.
Down to four hundred and twelve thousand. We did.
Are you on the nine-one-one thing, are you talking about?
Well, with the sheriff's department at seven and you at five, it would take the public tax, uh, public safety tax down to four twelve.
Would that be doable?
I, I'll have to, now is that including the volunteer fire department?
No. We approved it, we haven't.
That's with all of it, right.
Including the donations, we reduced it to one thirty-five and put the fifteen back in the highway.
Okay. And that would take it down to four hundred and twelve.
I just wanna get Boiler put in, that's all I care, I'm worried about.
We'll start a GoFundMe for your boy.
Yeah.
Boy Bob. Well, you get one too.
So on the public, uh, so what, what are your guys' thoughts on?
That works for the five and seventeen.
I'm sorry?
The five thousand dollar raise for nine-one-one and seven thousand for the sheriff's department, that works.
And, and that includes the volunteer fire department also. The way that we said, by doing the forty-five and then putting back the fifteen for them to get the fifty thousand.
Just did beat fifty thousand, yeah, forty-five each, uh, service and five.
Fifteen back with the contractual.
Yes.
I mean, if that works, that's the magic number, I'm okay with that. Jim, Tim?
It works. You happy?
Yeah, very appreciative of what we're getting, better than nothing, obviously.
Happy, Zach.
I'm happy, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see how, cutting them down to the five thousand from six thousand makes that big of a difference, it's only six.
Scott, you've been quiet lately, I'll put a film, all the unique thoughts.
Uh, I'm trying to catch up.
Dale, you happy?
You hear anything about tuck points, you're probably not.
Please, you happy?
Wait till you walk out in a brick kitchen ahead, Kelly, you're gonna reset.
I'm not walking that way, I'm gonna go this way. I don't feel wind is blowing that, guess where we.
Then it gets me over there. I agree.
I mean, truth I know.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
It's just one of those jobs I need to do.
Since I'm not doing it, it looks like, ugh.
Yeah.
Where else? Yeah, are you talking nine-one-one or sheriff's department?
I mean, if you, okay, we right now have these seven officers in here at base pay. So if we give raises on top of these, okay, you're gonna take them, so thirty-six back to the forty-three, where was that number?
Now, are we giving them raises on top of this seven thousand dollars?
No, but I mean, right now, okay, right now, in your jail lit, we were figuring, this is just the base pay, so thirty-six thousand.
Okay.
But, but now, we're talking taking some of those raises.
Both of it up.
Out of jail lit, right?
Okay.
Okay, so then that's, that's gonna change these numbers. Is that what we wanna do before I start changing numbers?
So how many at this time is gonna come out of jail lit?
Nine, ten.
So I think we did forty in that, right, in what you.
But we're hiring ten new officers, so. We're still at ten on that?
Actually, no, we're doing seven because community corrections is doing three.
Again, that's a commissioner call, but they're supposed to pay for three.
So actually, we, uh, yeah.
We budgeted ten just in case.
So for the people that are gonna be working at the new facility, if we pay all of them out of here, that would take your lit budget to nine forty-nine, eight ninety-two.
Down two there?
Is the agreement that we pay them upfront and then get reimbursed?
Again, that's a, that's a commissioner call, but.
Because if that, if it is, we would have to budget enough upfront.
Yeah.
So ask Dale, Dale, what are we doing, is that going to, what was the question?
Are we? Do you know, of community corrections, where they're agreeing to pay for three officers, are they reimbursing us? Like, where we have to pay it upfront and then they're going to reimburse us?
I don't think that point has been settled. I know that the interlocal agreement between community corrections and the county is being refined by the county attorney, which right now. I haven't heard anything from the last, for the last few days on that. I don't know, the talks have been going on between, uh, community corrections board and the county attorney on that.
Couldn't we request with the county attorney that we're not reimbursed, that we just, they just go ahead and pay it instead of us, and that way it won't have to come out of that? Because they've got the money.
Right.
To pay it, so why can't we just put that in our contract that they pay it all upfront?
That's good deal, Sharon.
And not be, and not have to worry about being reimbursed.
DOC has money, or rules with some of this that they have to abide by, but.
Right.
Again, I don't see why they couldn't.
Can you charge rent to county corrections for that building, or billing it?
No.
Or corrections too?
Uh, they've paid some money towards that. Could use some of their income, help offset some of that.
Now, they can't just give you the money though, I mean, because that's supposed to be specifically for their purpose. And I was wondering, we need to set it up to where it belongs to county sheriff's department, you're leasing part of it for the work release.
It's up to them, I just run the building, I don't, I don't own it.
I'm just trying to be a lawyer, okay? I mean, if it belongs to you, then you can lease it to them, what they're using it for.
So is that something we need to talk to? Jeffrey Westing about is, uh, if that's how we need to have that contractually.
You definitely need a place for those women prisoners, that's, that's all there is to it.
And that won't stop you from what you need to do tonight.
Pardon me?
That, that won't stop you from what you need to do tonight.
Okay.
So we can get in the public safety tax, I mean, we're just a hair apart, right?
So we're at a four hundred and twelve thousand, right?
On public safety?
Yeah, on the public safety.
It goes on at four ninety-nine eighty-seven.
We want it to be around five hundred?
Yeah.
So we're good.
We can go get food.
So now it's just matter of figuring, we could do raises for the county employees. And we'll be kicking around three.
So we're at four ninety-nine on the public safety, okay.
And we just figured that number off as a safe number, all right, Jane?
I'm sorry?
You figured that as a safe number, right? Five hundred?
Yeah, yeah. I think it's actually.
Yeah, I'm spending, five twenty-six, what they're thinking.
Okay.
Are we leaving at eight? No, we're gonna have breakfast in a little bit.
Yeah, eight oh two, we should've already been gone.
Yeah, actually, what were we, what did you just say? No change.
We've kicked around three thousand for rates for county employees.
Yeah.
And we just moved some money around from the commissioner, but does that work?
Three thousand per employee, you said?
Yeah.
And how many county employees do we have? You gave us that number.
Ninety-seven two years ago.
Forty-something, I don't.
Yeah.
Forty-nine, looks like. You'd be looking at adding a hundred and seventy-four thousand to your nine point six million. Oh, I already had that number in there, forgot I had it in there.
You already had it, is there?
It should've been. Yeah, the one seventy-four, seven-ten, I threw it on an unappropriated. Yeah, you would be, in county general, you would be at nine point six.
And we approved nine point one last year?
That including one boiler.
It's including the door that you open to look into.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Kelly, I appreciate that.
With a knob, you get a knob.
Can we, can we live with that?
Can you?
Asking.
I, that's not my question. That's for you guys to decide.
Is that across the board, everybody in the courthouse?
I figured in there.
It would be, um, all the.
What's not figured in?
County general.
Right, that's basically the courthouse employees, right?
You have to figure it in part-time too.
But now what about the raises for these guys?
It's not factored in.
It's not.
So, because these, they're either gonna have to get raises or get paid overtime.
Well, we just took care of Kelly off that list.
Well, we just took care of Kelly off that list.
Yeah, Kelly's the only one.
I didn't know that when you came out.
And with.
You may add far to a three, Kelly, like, meet budget.
And with, uh, Bill McDaniel. And with Bill McDaniel, we're looking at adding an employee there. So there's a lot more to factor in than what we're doing.
Dale, does Josh have much overtime?
He has quite a bit.
Yeah, I could say Josh is one you absolutely need to take up.
But it's still cheaper to do, pay overtime than it is to do the.
It will not be for Josh.
Yeah, I bet you Josh is here pouring in a hundred. What if you look at the sheet?
That depends.
He knew how hard it was to get him. He wouldn't, he wanted to get rid of him.
He didn't want to get rid of him, but no means.
Just look at this list, ones I think that would probably have a lot of overtime, having Michael King.
Yeah, definitely.
Um.
But he don't fall into that category.
Josh. I can feel him just falling. Right there.
This is the change, this is the. Isn't it just the four people now, Jane? Bless you.
Bless.
Yeah.
Oh, that's funny, yeah, my novice Kelly, now.
Yeah, Michael, Michael's not, can't be exempt. He doesn't meet any of the qualifications to be exempt.
I gotta hold this, yeah.
So it's Matt, Josh, Jane, Kelly, right? I had.
And Bill McDaniel.
Yeah. I thought he was an if. Something changed, like a.
Yeah, the Department of Labor laws, January first.
Okay.
But we got Kelly taken care of, right?
Top four.
Does Jay Havlin have a lot of overtime?
I, I don't think it's excessive. Uh, snow season isn't working for him either.
Does he work it though, or does his employees?
No, he's, when, when they're in there working, he's everywhere.
He's in there with them.
See, but she probably what's bad right now is, okay, Kelly, do you ever put overtime on your time sheets or do you put straight eighty? So see, if you're solely looking at their time sheets right now, she puts eighty, but she works.
Right, cause I know that I'm not even getting overtime.
She's exempt from overtime, so she doesn't track it.
Right.
Are we including superior court?
I have schedules that I have my name on, but we keep the board attached.
Certain superior court needs one or two employees. Are we looking at that in there anywhere? Superior, superior court?
No.
Okay, so, um. So I guess the next major thing we need to look at is Bill McDaniel's office. That'd be my thing. That's, I mean, if you guys might.
Area planning?
Yes.
He gets paid extra area planning, doesn't he?
Uh, yeah, he would.
He gets paid extra area planning already. Right? Bill McDaniel is paid extra, paid for, uh, area planning.
Yes.
No.
No, I didn't think so.
He just gets a flat salary. He doesn't get anything else.
Well, he got a board member fee or something.
The board members, they done?
No, he, just the board members.
He's needing forty-three thousand, five hundred fifty dollars for a building inspector. To take his place when he decides to retire. Which would take off his forty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollar salary. So he wants to train him.
Can that money come out of the surveyor perpetuation fund, or not?
No.
Okay.
Well, we were gonna cut anything from that to building inspector he needs. We could cut some of that off, send the guys there to learn your job, and you'll get the full forty-eight seven once Bill retires, or whatever it is at that time.
Could you contract this person in?
Can we contract? I don't know.
When I used to do homes, so the state, some municipalities would contract somebody to do building inspection. There's pluses and minuses to it. I, I do set it up. Some people set it up, I, however many houses you expect, you get paid them out, turn them out. So they just go ahead and real quick, look at it and leave.
But that's not the point of what he's trying to establish.
When's Bill go retiring?
He's looking at, I think he told me, two years, twenty, twenty-six.
We're gonna pay this guy two years.
Pardon me?
I was just thinking of personally, you're, you're, you're retired.
Well, he's, I've heard a couple dates, but my thing is, there's gonna be somebody in there, and then the person that gets in there, we're gonna run the same thing. There needs to be someone in there to help him.
I don't think anyone trained Bill when he took the job.
Well, I mean, that was then. I mean, this is something we gotta deal with right now.
If you sell an area plan, you wouldn't. That's not the way it works.
Well, my thing is, is I know, cause I've worked with Bill and I've worked with Scott Jones, and we need, someone needs to be in that office, and there needs to be somebody trained to take up that job. Because we got four major things going on in the city right now, and he has to inspect everything that they do. He has to be there. I mean, he's one person trying to do two people's jobs.
The state's the inspector.
So when this guy here gets trained and takes Bill's position, we gotta train somebody else, cause it'd be two people for the job.
It's a two-person job. What'd you say, Mike?
He said the state's the inspector.
Yeah, the state does all the.
But they still have, he still has to go up there.
He needs to sign papers. He don't need to inspect. He's always inspected.
He don't have to go up there, does he?
He made the state, when you're an inspector, you're supposed to be there and make sure it's structurally sound, and it meets all the code requirements for.
But the state.
The walls aren't falling down, right, Mike?
Sorry, Jim?
State inspector does that, don't he?
For the RE project.
Well, yeah, that's not a talk for business projects.
Yeah, but, but.
There's still things he has.
Bill doesn't make his cell phone, you know, Bill.
I'm just looking at forty-nine thousand dollars.
Plus insurance.
Or forty-three, forty-four thousand dollars.
I'm just saying, if he's, if he's got, if he's saying two years, then let's get somebody in a year that he is going to retire.
I agree.
I don't think we need to have one in there two years.
Yeah.
It's the same thing we did for EMA.
So in other words, he's just gonna stay there and do this work, no help. Half of it doesn't get done, cause he can't check into things. Did everybody read his letter? He's had two knee replacements. He's had COVID. The office was completely shut down, completely. People couldn't even get in to get their needs met on paperwork, permits and everything, because there's no one there to do it. He don't even have a secretary.
He also doesn't make his cell phone available, so people can't get ahold of him. You gotta call his office to get ahold of him.
Yes.
And you may get a call back in two days later.
Ask him for his cell phone number so you can get it.
I have it.
He won't hear DMI else.
I'll bet be at the meeting.
I'm not saying we don't give him a share, I'm just saying, there are some problems that he creates himself, too, by not making himself available, when, and it just.
So he should work all the time, then?
No, not saying that.
But I mean, if his cell phone needs to be available and people do not get ahold of him from his nine-to-four job, or whatever his hours are, and he doesn't, I mean, so therefore, he needs to work.
Intertracts from people wanting to come here, Bill, because they have to go some, just to get ahold of Bill as an inspector.
Because he don't, he doesn't even have a secretary. That's what I'm saying. There could be someone in the office. He don't even have that luxury.
He's in the office of the surveyor and has a secretary that are for both of them.
No, she is not there for both of them.
No, there's not.
Well, he's talking to her all the time. I mean, I would think she's doing something besides just for the surveyor.
I almost understood that surveyor secretary worked with him, too.
I did, too.
Well, I understood.
I thought she did, too.
Yeah.
If she does, it's out of the goodness of her heart.
I think we should delay this.
Well, let's just put the scenario out there. If he just comes in and quits, you guys deal with finding someone to go in there.
I mean, it wouldn't be no different if, that would happen.
I know, I know. I get what you're saying, but I think we always put things off till the point, okay, now we gotta do something.
Just like the boiler.
Everybody do something.
You have boiler.
I have a problem with that, when we can be proactive instead of waiting till it happens.
Exactly.
Well, I'm gonna tell you what, the maintenance on these buildings has been put off for years. So what's the difference?
Well, he's, he's not doing inspection on buildings for maintenance stuff.
No, I'm saying, she's talking about, she's talking about neglect.
I think it's all been neglected. I think it's time that we start doing something about it. I'm sorry.
I think you could find somebody that's been in the trades. You know, like, I, I could slip in that role, cause I know, I know construction, I know what's, what's supposed to happen. I'm not saying I'd like to. I was saying, find somebody that's been in the trades for a while, understands that. They're gonna, the, the learning curve is gonna be shorter. I wouldn't think you'd hire somebody that's fresh off the streets, some, some young guy, some twenty-eight, whatever, that doesn't have a lot of experience.
College grad.
Maybe, that's your thing, but I think you could find somebody that's kind of ready to go, so to speak. There's, there's other county rules or ordinances you're gonna have to know and stuff for it, but. I see your point, Sharon. I see, I think there's some things that he could do to help himself, too. He doesn't wanna leave in all his, his issues. But he does like to talk. You know, he'll, he'll, he's a very, he's a very friendly gentleman, and I'm not saying no. I guess I don't know where I'm at.
Well, on my thing, I had a personal experience with buildings. I just built a recovery center, and we had to use architects, engineers, we had to go through the whole scenario.
Right.
And you all can, it's like they keep saying, to visit the offices, you all need to visit his office and just see what really goes on.
And I have.
I do. I've been there.
I think we need to have an executive session about this particular position.
Well, maybe, yeah.
Doesn't qualify.
Yeah, I don't think.
Well, Mike, cause we got guys like Horning, and we got guys like Clench, and people that have, you know, builders, they know construction, and may not be twenty or thirty years old, they're forty, fifteen, sixty years old, and they can step right in and do inspections.
Well, I was equipment agents, you know, requirements, and I'm just saying, there's people, maybe they're busting their knees on jobs, that, that, that love construction, but they can't do it anymore.
That's right, exactly.
I guess, um, if, if, if we can get more, more stuff done in the community, and get, cause I know there's people, I've talked to somebody where there's a contractor from Dearborn to Kieltry that is so irritated with, with Fayette County, cause of all these hoops you gotta jump through, one of them was not being able to get ahold of inspector. If that can change, I'm for it. Cause this is gonna help the, it's gonna help the area.
Exactly. That's what I'm talking about. Is, I mean, if we, we want all these changes in the community, we want things to happen, we want people to come, then I, I just, I have a whole different.
Can we have an executive session about this?
No, it doesn't qualify.
Well, if there's a large construction job, Bill's not gonna be, he just signs papers. He's not doing the inspections. They're gonna be having inspectors coming in from the state to check it out. And I've had to do residential construction, check things out, see what's going on, see if it's being done right. And I ain't been trained over what I've read and gone to school for, my own.
I'd like to make a motion, I mean, add a position.
It's mainly just residential. I mean, it doesn't meet the building codes, is the lot the right size? Those are the jobs of the building inspector.
Second. I don't even know what you said, Mike.
I make a motion, I made the motion to add the position for Bill, for the inspector's office.
Okay, second.
What are we voting on?
Adding another position for Bill, Bill McDaniel. What my volunteer is, is that Bill likes to talk. He's very social, he's very, he's a good guy. Maybe to get somebody else in there with him, that will be not the opposite, but just to get stuff done. To be able to answer the phone and give himself an erupt. You know, it's be a different, maybe a different experience, you know? That's what I'm hoping for.
You wanna hire him, Mike, at forty-four thousand dollars a year, though, or do you want per job?
He just said the job. He didn't say the amount.
What's their starting wage for it?
He wants forty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty.
Their starting wage for it, what else?
It, it depends on what kind of a position. There's no set.
And there was a job description, too. I don't know.
If you're bringing in a person to train, you don't wanna bring him in almost at your wage.
He has it at, at twenty-eight hours per week at twenty-five dollars an hour.
Wow, I'm gonna work for that.
I think we should do it on a contract.
Okay.
It can't contract. It don't work.
I'd say thirty-six, thirty-eight. I'm curious, you heard any of those things?
Well, if it's twenty-eight hours per week, Mike, if it's twenty-eight hours a week at twenty-five dollars an hour, the line item would be thirty-six.
Okay.
Is, is what it would be.
I think that's fair. I said, I meant, I meant my motion. Jane, I'm gonna amend my motion.
Okay. Hang on.
Ready?
I was trying to see what that person made before, when they were here, so I was still, thank you. Go ahead. What's your motion amended to?
To fill the, uh, the spot that Bill McDaniel's over, starting wage at thirty-six thousand, based upon twenty-eight hours a week. I'm not saying he has to be there, but that's, that's the number Bill's given us, so just do that.
If they're working twenty-eight hours a week, we don't have any benefits then, do we? Do you have the insurance on that?
I'm sure they put a cap on hours.
Yeah, he'd be part, part time.
He would be part-time. He wouldn't get it in.
So he wouldn't get insurance, or he wouldn't get part?
Well, it's part-time. How long, how long are we dealing this for?
Two years. Well, two years, then you go for the rule of the full-time position.
Yeah.
What's then? You'll be getting bills paid, won't you? Forty-eight seven?
If Kamisha's hiring?
I think Bill should, darn, next year, we get the guy trained, so we don't have to pay one salary.
I, I agree with you. I really agree with you on that, cause I see a can of worms opening up right now.
What's that?
Huh?
What?
He even assisted. It's been what it is, trains. Maybe Kelly's go retarded next year. Maybe she needs to train somehow, I don't know. No, I know what's, if you don't wanna say.
Well, I made the motion, it's, I think it's a second.
Okay, it's been made a motion, second.
Who seconded it?
I'll second it.
Oh, I thought you said you did.
He, he did his motion.
What is motion?
I'll second it.
To hire the person for the building inspector's office at a starting wage of thirty-six thousand dollars for, it's a part-time position.
Would a building inspector be under public safety?
No.
No.
Well, I would hope so.
No.
No.
All right. Do we wanna do each person vote, or?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay.
Minta?
Yes.
Hayden?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Wolf?
No.
Babington?
No, for now.
Stewart?
No.
Crantill?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. Now on the.
Oh, yeah, we figured out Bill's, Bill's pay?
That's what we're looking at. Does.
Especially if you just added him a person, you could leave him where he's at and just not give him, and try to limit his hours, so he doesn't have overtime.
Yeah.
That's what I'm kinda leaning towards.
Yeah.
See how it works out. See how it works out. Because if you give an extra guy that should help Bill up, what?
And can we specify that with Bill? Yeah.
You're good.
Okay. And Josh Jarboe, what, how, his is gonna be raised, right? Because his overtime would cost more than if we just gave him a raise. Okay, and Kelly's is already done.
Thank you, I didn't know about that.
And then, so Josh Jarboe, did we decide on that?
I saw, Janie kept the number on something like fifty-two thousand or whatever. Could you explain it to me, like, what that represented? But she said something like fifty-two, you didn't have, you wouldn't have to pay the, the fee or something.
I'm sorry.
Maybe I misunderstood. I thought, I thought you threw it around the first warning individuals at fifty-two thousand.
No, earlier with Kelly, I was saying fifty-two for her, because six of her was gonna come out of public safety.
Okay, okay.
So that's why. But yeah, the number is fifty-eight, six fifty-six.
I mean, Josh does a good job, and I think it should probably be that.
Yeah, I instantly had the courthouse for the first time in a hundred years. I love that, pretty good.
And you're gonna be hiring two new maintenance people, right?
Well, he has indicated that he would like to have another one, by the way.
You put your budget to.
As soon as the jail annex comes into use, there'll be added work there for maintenance department. Who will be the janitor over there, Dale? Is that Harone? Is that Harjanitor for the...
Well, that's just part of the extra work that our maintenance department will have to absorb.
Does Josh clean the jail?
Inmate workers clean the jail. Get free labor.
I think jail commander will help too.
Hey, not that I didn't.
So would you have the female side, the annex jail?
Look out. They're slanted up.
Don't we big tear, tear a shower out, Josh is there.
Where are we at?
That's, yes.
We're at Josh's pay. And Jay Hamlin.
We should be able to hammer through this pretty quick, I mean...
Yeah. Jay doesn't have that much overtime, does he, Dale?
He said it's not excessive.
The winner's excessive.
I would just say no for Jay.
Do we need to vote on each one individual, or can we just do an overall?
No, it'd be, yeah.
Okay.
We do it at the end.
Okay, and Bill, we're not doing a raise, because we're giving him a person. Josh Jarboe, um, what's the amount?
Let's see, I, I, I kind of agree with it, just doing that, because I think that...
It's fifty-eight, six five six.
Yeah.
Could, could be a big demand on him.
Yeah.
My, my personal opinion.
Yeah.
He's gonna have a lot of overtime.
Would you do Dale?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think Dale probably ends up being chief.
Matt, I wouldn't think Matt would have that much overtime.
We can check with him when he comes back.
Okay, I don't know anything about Michelle Richardson.
Oh, she wouldn't, she doesn't qualify. The only other one on that, well, two on that list that would qualify, um, okay, hang on. We talked about Kelly, we talked about Jay, and Josh, and Bill already. So Matt Shirk is the only other one.
I wouldn't think there would be that much there.
Pardon me?
I wouldn't think there would be that much there.
Not overtime, do you?
I don't think so.
Because he usually keeps his hours pretty. So is that a... Comment? Everybody's quiet.
I think they're ready to go to sleep.
So what'd you say about Matt?
Um, they're thinking he doesn't have a lot of overtime. And then Wade and Michael are anonymous, right? I mean, they're all... Do what, I'm sorry?
Never mind. I don't have anonymous.
And then Michael King, what did we?
He's a...
He is a co-missile.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
And the thing with Michael is, Michael has a lot of overtime now, which we are not paying him. But one suggestion, like, texted you earlier today, maybe reconsider sharing him with the city.
Do what, Jane?
Right now, we share Michael with the city. So to avoid overtime for him, maybe reconsider the contract with the city.
Does city pay to him?
They pay half. Like, we pay his full salary, which is approximately fifty thousand right now, and then the city reimburses us twenty-five of that. But like, their contract isn't for half. Their contract is specific half up to this amount of money. So we would either need to calculate how much overtime he could potentially have, and redo that contract for them to pay a true half, or not share him with the city.
He puts in a lot of overtime, though, don't he?
Yeah, yes.
So when you say not share him with the city, we would just hire him and they would not have him?
Right. They, they would have to hire somebody else.
Okay.
But that was just a suggestion to avoid the overtime.
Right.
Yeah. That's a lot of strain. It's a lot to do, thank you, so. And like you said, he can't do everything. He can't, you know, reporting cable and stuff like that, that's not, that's not the best use for him. You know, it's a contract, I would agree with some of that stuff. But I like the idea of just, you know, keeping him, keeping him for the county and let the city, you know, hire an IT guy.
If he needs to run cable, one of the part-time maintenance guys can help him.
Possibly.
Yeah. Now, the only thing I see with that, I hate to jump in here.
Leave it in LA.
That's why I'm sitting at this table. Um, is that he does come over and maintain spillman for the officers and dispatch. So spillman's down, then everybody's down.
You're, you're, that's for county.
That's city and county. He has to go back in that little room in the city building and, and do some things in there, and, I mean, not that that's...
But that's something, you don't, you don't have one person doing it, one other person.
I agree.
You have one person maintaining it, so it's not gonna be Michael.
So we are raising his?
He's not, he's not on there.
Okay, okay, you're right, I'm sorry.
We're just, we're just discussing general...
Okay, generalization, okay. So everyone, so what I have is, um, we've already taken care of Kelly. Jay was a no. Josh, yes. Bill McDaniel was a no, because he's getting a, um, Dave Brickman, Matt Shirk, Wade Walling, they stay the same?
I think that, they, none of our, they can't be exempt, so they would have to stay. Like, it would, you could raise them up to there, and it won't matter, they can still get overtime. So yes, I would think they're the same.
Okay.
Because when we originally did this, it was kind of a, the new laws were coming out, we're not sure who qualifies, whatever. But after what I sent last week with the clarifications on who qualifies.
Who qualifies.
Yeah. It eliminated some right there.
Okay. So we have everybody basically taken care of.
I think so.
That's gonna make a difference. Did everybody?
Matt says he doesn't have overtime.
He does not, okay, okay. All right, so do we, we need to make a motion to approve this?
We can just do, like, do it all at the end.
Okay. So we're done with that?
When we finalize the, the budget, that's, that's part of it.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Cranfield?
Yes.
As you know, I've been under the weather the last several days. I'm gonna have to go.
Okay.
So I apologize to the council.
No, you're fine, thank you for coming.
I'm ready to go too, Scott.
Hey, if I get sick, I'm gonna sue you.
Uh, it's not, it's not catching, I promise.
We wanna, before he leaves, we wanna set the next night, make sure it's on the calendar.
All right, when is, um, I know he's not feeling well. I can text it to you, if you want me to, I'll just text it.
You know a conflict with any particular night?
Not that I know of at this point. I won't know until...
You just wanna zoom in, Scott?
Scott?
You just wanna zoom in?
I'll call if I can.
Okay, thank you for coming. Next, uh...
Wednesday?
Yeah, we got a meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, yeah, so Wednesday, or Thursday.
Wednesday?
Talking this week?
Yeah.
Yes, well, we have to, because then we have to have it in by the six.
Wednesday work everybody?
Yeah.
Well, we've got over a week.
I agree.
Are you good, Jim? Wednesday?
Wednesday, yeah, five o'clock.
Yeah. You're good.
Now, is this to finalize it, or is this just to go over it one more time?
Should be finalized here, hopefully.
I would think we're close, but I mean, there may be some discussion that we have to do.
There are some things we still need to cover.
Make sure Matt's in here too, will you?
I wanna text him right now.
I'd say Wednesday will be okay.
Was there somebody else we needed in here? Because we said we couldn't take another budget unless they were in here.
Matt was the only person.
Was it just Matt? I was thinking there was somebody else.
How far over budget are we right now, Jane, approximately?
Are you talking about county general?
Yeah.
Right now, you're at nine-six.
Nine point six? This is nine point one last year.
What do we gotta get to?
I mean, you could pass a nine point six, but you're cutting into your reserves.
How much? Are we cutting in again?
If we do a nine point six, we're gonna cut into reserves, we gotta cut.
Yeah.
It's what she just said.
I don't, I don't, I don't even know how that answers that question. I mean, you can pass a budget for nine point six.
I know, but how much are we cutting into reserves?
Well, if you should have passed a budget for nine point one, five hundred thousand.
Half a million dollars.
Well, we can still have more discussion.
Could you, uh, email me the updated?
Me too.
I'm sorry?
Could you email me the updated spreadsheet like you did before?
Me too. All of us, I guess. Please.
And there's still some areas we haven't handled.
Okay, so we will resume Wednesday, five o'clock. This meeting is recessed till Wednesday.
I just texted.